Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to call this public hearing to order. If everybody can, any remarks?
Hopefully not.
Seeing none, we'll get right into it. Senator Kathy Austin, the floor is yours.
So, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for allowing me to testify in front of you on the mapping, the Connecticut Opportunity Map that is housed within the Connecticut Finance and Authority. And I have an awful lot of concerns relative to this map. I've submitted written testimony. And if you look back on this, and I can provide for you the concern that I had when this first came out on how dramatically it would impact Eastern Connecticut. This map identifies a fully a third of the state as a low opportunity area, which I would dispute on a regular basis. In addition, this map was created by an advocacy group, which does not accurately represent the state, in my opinion. It needs to use updated parameters that would utilize a broad array of metrics and economic potential, which it does not bring into account. In addition to that, I have written for three years in a row to CHAF to look at changing this map. This map is used by other state agencies to present grants to different housing projects. I had a housing project in the town of Sprague that I brought to them, and it was a 90-unit. The town of Sprague has about 1,200 housing units in it. It was a 90-unit increase, and that was not enough. They said it had to be at least 180-unit increase on a 20-acre site, which is mostly ledge. We already had developed both water and sewer on that particular property. It still sits fallow. It's something that we should be addressing. I have attempted to change this mapping structure that has been implemented by CHAF, both in public testimony to CHAF when it first came out, and again, three years of op-eds to the New London Day, talking about what was happening in Eastern Connecticut. The map says that Eastern Connecticut would only get 1% of consideration and only would have 1% in growth. I can't sit by any longer. I put this bill in. People are now paying attention, but I shouldn't have to put a piece of legislation in to pay attention to something that we could fit into a regulation discussion. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions, should anybody have any questions on this mapping structure.
Thank you, Senator. Any questions from members? Senator Marks?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Senator Austin, and thank you for bringing this up, because it also affects the 20th district that I represent. So, does the map impact receiving other types of grants?
Yes, on the CHAF website, it indicates that the map is used by, at a minimum, the Department of Housing relative to grants. So, it's not just about a 9% competitive grant program that people are sort of not allowed to apply for, but it's also other grants broadly defined. It just says other grants through the Department of Housing will be used. This map will be used to decide who gets those grants.
Okay. Water and sewer is always a big concern in our, the eastern part of Connecticut, where we serve, because we don't have a lot of the sewer. The infrastructure isn't there. If you go onto this map, will it help to, do you see where the water and sewer infrastructure is?
Thank you for that question. No, it does not. It does not include any idea on where water and sewer is located, and if there are other means for us to address the issue of both water capacity and would a septic system, a larger septic system be applicable to certain areas? Water is a huge issue in Eastern Connecticut. Many of my towns have had drought situations several times over the last few years, to include the town of Hebron, the town of Lebanon, the town of Franklin. All of those towns were impacted through lack of water. So, to just assume that water is always going to be available, or there is a capacity for a sewer system to be put in, at the total cost of either the developer or the municipality is something that is not clearly addressed by this mapping structure.
Thank you. I mean, that's so important, because we might just be putting in a 10-unit, right? A 10-unit development, where we could have the sewer and the water, but if it doesn't show it. So, I absolutely thank you for your advocacy, and thanks for being here to testify.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Marks. Any other questions from members? I have one. This change, can this map be updated by CHAF or DOH without legislative input? Or do we need to have this bill in order to?
This map cannot be addressed by CHAF or by the Department of Housing, because it was developed by an advocacy group. And neither CHAF nor the Department of Housing have ownership of the map. And I found that out in the last six months, that this was something that's owned by an advocacy group, that we don't have the capacity to change. And I find it a little bit disturbing that a state agency or CHAF would use a map designed by somebody else that we have no, that we had no input in on, in its development, and that we have no input in on its use, or changing it. I'm sorry.
And do you know what part of the state this advocacy group is based in?
Say it again?
Do you know what part of the state this advocacy group may be based in?
Sustainable CT is my understanding, or the Community Alliance, the Connecticut Alliance for Housing, one of those groups. But it does not have the best interest of the state of Connecticut in when it identifies fully a third of the state as low opportunity. It criticizes the map itself by its usage implicates, it says that our towns don't have good schooling systems and don't have good public transportation. Now, I'll give you that we don't have good public transportation, but that's a chicken and the egg thing. Do we get more public transportation if we have a denser population? But I can tell you, our schools are good. They may not be the top-level school, but I can tell you that the schools in Eastern Connecticut are no worse. I would posit that they're better than some certain places in Connecticut.
Thank you for that answer. And seeing, oh, Representative Scott, right at the buzzer.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. I just, literally, the question you asked about updating the map.
Right.
Will this bill change it to, we're not just updating, where the state owns the map, right? Because just updating the map doesn't seem like we own it, we can manipulate down the road and make it updated, right? Because if we update it now, is that give us the rights to update it down the road? So, I just want to be clear, will this now give either CHAF or whoever the ability to own the map?
I think they should own a map. I don't think they should own this map. I think that they should develop their own map that accurately represents Connecticut. And I find it a bit disturbing that it took writing a piece of legislation instead of addressing the issue. This has been going on for three years now, and time and time again, Eastern Connecticut has been ignored on this issue. And I don't think that anybody should use a map over which they don't have any control to decide where state dollars are going to go. And when people talk about housing nowadays, when they often criticize Eastern Connecticut, saying you're not doing any housing, but you, one of my op-eds says, "You hobble us." You criticize us for not doing something, but you don't want to give us the resources to do it. And that's unacceptable, in my opinion, and I think it's a direct slap in the face.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate that. And I just think we just have to look at the wording to make sure we're capturing that, if that's how we truly want this bill. Because I think the wording doesn't even go that far. I think we need to look at what Senator Austin's saying, and maybe tweak it a little bit to make it more aligned to what you're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Seeing no other questions, thank you, Senator Austin. We appreciate your time here.
Thank you very much. You all have a nice day.
You too. Next, we have Mr. Steve Shapiro on line.
Hello, everyone. I'm Stephen Shapiro. Thank you so much for serving on this committee. Chairman Felipe, my local rep, Tony Scott. I've been in some discussions with my two lobbyists, Mike Rel and Jim Ammon, on a middle housing bill. We've talked to Representative Luxburg, Sims, and Rojas in regards to this. You know, we all know there's a severe shortage here in Connecticut. We're down 77% in housing inventory compared to our level at the beginning of COVID, which is dead last out of all 50 states. You know, 830G, we all know the law. It's got some benefits. It's got some negatives. I'm down in Fairfield County, a lot of towns in the area. Their zoning boards and whatnot haven't been the most receptive to some of the 830G developments, and they end up in court and get bogged down. And while they're getting bogged down in court, no new units are being produced. And that's why our inventory is so short. And in addition to that, the affordability, I think we can all agree, the costs in the state, whether it's electric bills, housing, or whatever, are very exorbitant. And our housing costs are very exorbitant for the simple economics of a supply and demand situation. What we're proposing is a middle housing bill that would provide another kind of tool to use to get the housing stock we need. It wouldn't be, you know, go as crazy dense as you want. The density would be tiered on a town's population density. I think one of the things we need to take into account is we have our rural municipalities in the state. We have our larger cities in the state. And the infrastructure in the different types of municipalities is different. And to be able to provide more cost-effective housing in a variety of areas, you know, would be a good thing, but it can't be at the cost of the infrastructure a certain town would have. So, in this proposal, the densities would be in three different tiers. Under 1,000 people per square mile would be a lower density. 1,025 would be in the 6 to 8 unit per acre range. And then there's the 2,500 and up tier, where you could go a little denser. 30% of the units would be deed restricted, just like an 830G project, but they would be at the 80 AMI, not the 60 and the 80. And the reason for that being is, for simply economics, if you're going to ask a developer to not put 50, 60 units on an acre with an 830G and only do 8 to 10, it's got to make sense, or they're not going to utilize the bill. So, the 80% units, although the developer might lose a little money or not make.
Concluded. If you could please summarize. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Your three minutes have concluded. If you could please summarize the testimony.
Can you folks hear me?
We can hear you. Your three minutes have concluded. If you could please summarize the remainder of your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Can you folks hear me?
We can hear you. I don't think you can hear us. All right. Sorry, Mr. Shapiro. I think we lost you. You're frozen on my end. Next, we have Representative Jeff Luxembourg.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairs, Marks, Felipe, Ranking Member Sampson, and Scott, distinguished members of the Housing Committee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify on behalf of 7112, a product of hundreds of hours of collaborative work with Representative Turco, Representative Sims, the Office of the Speaker of the House, and the Majority Leader in his office, and the outstanding leadership of this committee. I'd like to focus my testimony on Section 1, and what I hope it will ultimately become as part of this bill. It's an idea I developed over the summer while I was recovering from kidney cancer, which I have dubbed Propel CT. What is Propel CT? It stands for Providing Real Opportunity Purchasing Existing Listings. Before I explain how Propel CT works, let me just review the problem. We're short between 90,000 and 140,000 affordable housing units. The cost to produce each unit, according to CHFA and DOH, is 300,000 to 500,000 per unit. That means, to solve our affordable housing shortage in the state, we would need between $30 billion and $50 billion. Obviously, we don't have $30 billion or $50 billion. So, we need to think outside the box. We need creative new ideas that will more rapidly and more affordably produce real deed-restricted affordable housing. That's where Propel CT comes in. Here's how it works. State of Connecticut changes a few words in state statute to turn on a long-since-dormant housing authority that used to be embedded in CHFA and existed throughout much of the 1900s. That housing authority is given a board of experts. Real estate investing experts, homelessness experts, nonprofit expertise, fiduciary expertise, property management expertise, the state treasurer probably sits on that board, and any other experts that this committee thinks are relevant. The new again housing authority at CHFA, Propel CT, acts like an affordable housing real estate investment trust, is seated with $25 million in one-time bond allocation. And it goes out and it buys residential real estate all over the state, leases it to tenants that qualify for affordable housing. They have a RAP certificate or a Section 8 voucher, manages the fund, and the rents recapitalize the fund, so that it can buy more units, deed-restrict them affordable, and continue to do good. It's sort of like a cross between a social benefit corporation and a real estate investment trust. The money it's earning means it can do more good and deed-restrict more units for the state. There's a lot of benefits to this innovative proposal. It costs significantly less per unit. You can buy an existing housing unit in Connecticut, in some cases, for $10,000 or less down, and use CHFA or bank financing. So, compare that to the 300,000 to 500,000 a unit we spend when we build. It's better for the environment, because we're dealing with existing stock as opposed to the damage we do to the environment when we have to build new. It outsmarts the NIMBYs, right? If I want to build 1,000 affordable unit complex in Greenwich today, I'm going to face many, many years of battles, legal battles, zoning challenges, and exclusionary, and in some cases racist, response to that. But if Propel CT goes to buy a little one-bedroom apartment in Greenwich, there's no mechanism for a NIMBY to stop them. And that property can be deed-restricted affordable immediately and help provide opportunity where before there was none.
Representative Luxembourg, your time has expired. If you could please summarize.
Yeah, no problem. No problem. This idea already exists in two different ways. There are already affordable housing REITs in the marketplace that earn investors an 8% to 10% return. So, investors today make money investing in affordable housing REITs. They're doing a good thing, and they're making money. So, that idea already exists. And housing authorities doing this type of work already exists in Maryland. They're, so this idea is sort of a hybrid of two things that are already working really well and harnessing those two things for the benefit of Connecticut. So, I'll stop there. I don't want to run afoul of the sensitive time commitments of the committee, but I guess I'll, with the Chair's indulgence, open it up to any questions people might have.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions? Representative Scott?
Former Chairman Luxembourg of the Housing Committee. How are you doing?
I'm doing great. It's wonderful to be here.
Thank you for coming back and visiting us. I do want to question one number, and then we'll get into the details of it. The $300,000 to $500,000. In my mind, you say it's about $300,000 to $500,000 to build one unit of affordable housing. I'm not questioning you. Where does that number come from? Because I can think about going to build a house for half a million dollars, a three-bedroom, 2,500-square-foot house for $300,000, $500,000. You're telling me one affordable unit. It sounds like something's out of whack. So, can you please tell me where that number's coming from?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think those numbers come from analysis from, I think CHFA has at certain point put sort of a rough cost on what it costs when they lend on an affordable unit. But I think DOH also has some numbers, and I think some of the advocacy groups have some numbers. So, 300,000 to 500,000 is sort of the range of what it costs to build an affordable unit in Connecticut. The reasons why it's so expensive are you've got exorbitant land costs, you've got you've got costly litigation, you've got expensive labor, you've got expensive lumber um, and materials. Um, a lot of the things that make housing production very expensive in Connecticut, uh, we also hope to address in this bill and other sections of the bill. And actually, the Housing Committee has some great proposals that you're working on to drive down the cost, to pr- to, to try to get that cost down. But needless to say, Representative Scott, um, it, you know, it's, it's a lot of money per unit. And because it's a lot of money per unit and we don't have unlimited resources as a state of Connecticut, I think we need other creative ways to partner with the production. I'm not saying we don't need to build, uh, we absolutely need to build. But we just need other ideas that will also help us um, get more affordable units more quickly because people are really, really suffering right now.
Thank you. The Affordable Housing Real Estate Investment Trust.
Yeah.
That's what you're thinking about, so, does that exist already? If it did, if it does exist, okay, but if it didn't exist and it went away, why did it exist before it went away?
Yeah, so um, there are affordable housing real estate investment trusts that, that exist all over the country and do lots of real estate, both building and acquiring of existing real estate. They rent to people who qualify for affordable housing. They make a big difference in terms of societal impact and they pay investors a great return. So that already exists. Um, this doesn't, ha- hasn't existed at CHFA or in the state of Connecticut in the form that I envisioned this, this, that I'm calling Propel CT. Um, the, the CHFA did for many years throughout the nineties have a housing authority. And uh, so I'm, I'm seeking to just turn that housing authority back on and use that as the vehicle. Housing authorities across the country can do this. And to maybe more clearly answer your question, there is a housing authority in Maryland that is currently doing, doing something somewhat similar, which is they are uh, lending money, as I understand it, to a developer. Developer builds a lot of affordable housing, pays the housing authority back, and the housing authority retains ownership of all those affordable units. So once they're rented, the housing authority's collecting the rent, and that rent is then recapitalizing that housing authority's ability to do more, to go out and build more affordable housing. So this idea is sort of combining what that housing authority i- is very brilliantly doing in Maryland with what already exists in the, in the capital marketplace, which is Affordable Housing Real Estate Investment Trust, combining the best parts of both ideas and bringing it to Connecticut.
I do have a couple more questions, but I'll defer to the Chairs and see if anyone else has questions and they'll circle back to me, thank you.
Sure, yeah, thank you for the good question.
Representative Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Representative Luxenberg, it's great to see you. You know, I think this is a great um, proposal and um, it goes to show uh, that you probably shouldn't have left the Housing Committee.
Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to ask you um, a couple of questions um, relative to this. Um, you uh, mentioned Maryland and uh, how they actually utilize this concept. Uh, and it speaks that uh, to the success they've had. Could you give us any um, metrics or numbers uh, in terms of how, how they've been successful and what the cost per unit that they've been able to uh, utilize to produce uh, the housing?
Yeah, that's a, um, th- thank you, Representative Butler, that's a, that's a great question. I think in Maryland, they're at sort of the beginning, uh, the beginning stage. So I, I don't know that they, I don't know that the metrics exist yet to measure Maryland. Um, what, as I understand what they're doing in Maryland is that, you know, they've, they've got a private developer that's building like a big complex, like a lot of units. And they're probably um, achieving maybe a lower per-unit cost than we, than we do because they're, they're, they're achieving some economies of scale because they're doing like a lot in one place. Um, so they're getting some cost-cutting there. Um, but they still, th- they're still, that model's still more expensive than what I envisioned here because they've got all the building costs. Um, the way what they're doing is similar to what I'm proposing is after they spend all that money, and they're spending way more per unit there than, than my idea here suggests, they benefit from being able to collect the rents, right? Those are, once it's done, potentially those are all cash flow, flow positive units. And so they're, th- th- that, e- e- even if they're spending a lot to build in Maryland, once they've spent it and once it's built, they get the benefit of owning it. And because they get the benevo- benefit of owning it, they get all that rental income, which allows them to then, in their case, build more affordable housing. So I think the jury's still out a little bit in Maryland, it's a new idea, but uh, the New York Times was certainly excited about it.
Well, thank you. And my uh, second uh, question is um, how would this concept actually leverage um, existing federal and state resources? How, how does that combination work within this framework?
Yeah, that's a great question, I really appreciate it. Um, so right now, the federal government spends a fortune on Section Eight vouchers to housing authorities in Connecticut, to DOH and across the country. And then the state of Connecticut, on top of that, spends a lot of money on RAP certificates. And I'm glad that the federal government does that, I hope they continue to. And I'm glad that the state of Connecticut does that because these uh, vouchers and RAP certificates are life-saving for individuals and families that get one. Life-saving, vital, but very expensive. Today, what happens with those vouchers and RAP certificates is somebody searches for a private landlord over and over and over again, please, give me housing. And in many cases, they're rejected over and over and over and over and over again. And um, upon being rejected over, and, and, but eventually they find someone. And so the monthly payments every month to house that person goes to a private landlord. This proposal starts to shift some of that money that's already being spent. Federal government's already paid for the RAP, uh, for the Section Eight voucher. State of Connecticut's already paid for the RAP certificate. But instead of all the money going to the private landlord who owns the housing unit that that person's being housed in, it's now going to Propel CT. And Propel CT isn't, can, can use it to buy more units and create more affordability. Whereas the private landlord uses it and does whatever they want with it. Let me be clear, I don't oppose private landlords making money and housing people who need affordable housing. I do it as a private landlord myself. I think it's good when landlords actually accept people that have RAP certificates and Section Eight vouchers. But there's no reason that Connecticut can't capitalize on those federal dollars and turn it into more affordable housing instead of solely enriching private landlords. And that's what, that's, that's how this leverages existing federal and state funds. I hope I answered your question, but-
Yes, you did, and thank you for explaining it. I have a much clearer um, picture of this now. Uh, and Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me to ask my questions.
Thank you, Representative Butler, and I won't take the preface to your first question to heart. Uh, Representative Corvus.
Thank you for appearing before us today, Representative. Um, I represent the one forty-ninth district, which is Greenwich and Stamford. And um, we haven't had, I haven't had the pleasure of working with you yet in this legislature, but I just did wanna say for the record that um, Greenwich has twenty-five percent of its children on free and reduced lunch in our public schools. And in the last five years, we've increased our affordable housing stock through our um, Greenwich Communities Housing Authority by ten percent. I just wanted to stay, say on the record, I don't think it's productive to attribute motives like NIMBY or racism um, to entire towns. I've never heard that. I don't feel that way, I've never heard a constituent feel that way. And I just think it would be more productive if we didn't um, kind of go there, um, because it's not true. But um, so that's one comment. Then on the point of um, I love this creativity because I think this is exactly how we break the logjam of state control on the one hand and um, local control on the other. Um, but I just had a question about this REIT because as you probably know, REITs in the private sector are heavily leveraged vehicles and the way that they make money um, is by being leveraged. So I wanted to ask, is this REIT considered, is this gonna be all equity? Are this, is this gonna borrow money? Um, and when you did the modeling for how this is going to work and be self-sustaining, when does it start to be self-sustaining? Or do we put the twenty-five million in, you know, intervals across time?
So um, thank you so much, Representative, for that question. First of all, let me apologize, I certainly didn't mean to pick on or single out any community. Um, there are folks, there are neighborhoods and folks and individual landlords and communities in, in all, in, throughout the state of Connecticut that, that might have concerns um, about large-scale affordable housing development that, that comes in. And I, I see this as, as a creative way to create more affordable housing and perhaps get around some of the concerns in some communities. But I certainly didn't mean to single out Greenwich or any uh, community in particular.
Thank you.
Um, having said that, um, I do know that the average apartment to rent in Greenwich today is over four thousand dollars a month. And so there isn't a lot of naturally affordable housing in Greenwich. Um, and so we need more affordable housing in Greenwich and, and in Manchester where I live and across the state. So I'm looking to sort of uh, creatively solve that problem in, in a way that, that might have a faster, faster streamline. Now let me answer your question about the, the uh, the lending piece. So um, I do view this as leveraged, uh, and so there would be borrowing, this entity would be borrowing, as I envision it, from CHFA, uh, which already has a lot of experience providing lending for affordable housing. Um, but banks could also provide the, the lending because banks would get Community Reinvestment Act credits, which they need um, for lending on affordable housing. So there's lots of good lending options here and leverage is gonna be a key for it to make money. Now what do I expect the return on investment to be, is, is an interesting question. Um, I, I would envision that a private market affordable housing REIT that is just to create affordable housing and make investors money and gets an eight to ten percent annual return is probably gonna do a little bit better than Propel CT. Because Propel CT is gonna have to balance the, we wanna make money so we can do more good with the public interest a little more. There's gonna be a little social benefit corporation element to Propel CT. So for example, Propel CT might be less quick to evict uh, a, a tenant that is a nuisance or is, because they're gonna be weighing the economic benefit of the rent versus the human element of going through an eviction, right? So, so that's, that's an example. Housing authorities have to go through that difficult calculation every day already. Um, so there's a model for figuring that out. But I think because there's a social benefit to this and uh, that's gonna be part of that team of experts that's gonna make the decisions, I wanna project a slightly lower rate of return than just the straight private market affordable REITs get of eight to ten percent. So I would envision this might get maybe a four to six percent return annually. But that's all being recapitalized in the fund to buy more housing and deed-restricted affordable. And we can create permanent affordable housing that way. So I hope I've answered your question.
Uh, yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So when would, um, does the twenty-five million, is that recurring? Or how many times do, would we as a legislature need to put that in until the vehicle became self-sustained?
I, I, I would suggest once. I, I would suggest it's a one-time bond. And then if this works the way I believe it will and the way I know it will, I have uh, many, many years of experience um, in every facet of housing, um, from being a Realtor, real estate investor, property manager license, uh, you name, working at a nonprofit that dealt with housing insecurity and homelessness, you name it, I've done it in housing. I know this will work and make money. Um, so I believe it just needs a one-time startup to, to put together the team, perhaps uh, ha- have some staff to, to do the work and manage it in an ongoing fashion. And once it's up and running, I believe it will make a four to six percent return annually, maybe even better. And it'll fund itself and grow on its own without additional investment from the state and be an ongoing force for good in the housing market.
Thank you very much for the conversation, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Corvus. Representative Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative, thank you so much for coming in front of us with this really innovative, unique proposal here to solve a very, very complicated problem, as you've mentioned, with um, a hundred thousand or more units that we need in the state. And I apologize if you already said this because you've given us a lot of good information. But once this program is up and running, how many units annually you think could be purchased? And, you know, and then reserved for affordable housing?
Gosh, that's a, that's a great question. Um, I wish I had a crystal ball and knew. Um, I, you know, um, I, I think, right? If you look at any point right now in the real estate market, like how many houses are even on the market? How many apartment buildings or condos or multifamilies or single families? There's only, you know, I think maybe somewhere, but at this snapshot time, maybe like there's three to five thousand units on the market at any given time. Um, and that speaks to our larger supply-demand challenges in the housing market. And it's why this is not a silver bullet solution. This is a solution in tandem with building more housing, which the committee is doing great, great work on. Um, but I think um, it can buy units that are on the market, but it could also buy units that it finds out about that never hit the market, just like, just like people do every day. Um, and so I think it could acquire potentially thousands of units in a year. And then once it's making money, uh, the, the housing market might also change over time. Right now, there's not a lot of inventory potentially for this to buy. Um, but housing markets change and before you know it, there could be lots of inventory that's affordable where this entity could come in and, and, and buy a lot of units. So I, to give a rough estimate, you know, I think it would be a good goal if it, if it purchased a thousand units in one year and deed-restricted them all, and we got a thousand deed-restricted units out of existing stock in year one, I think that would be a home run. I think that would be a home run and it could grow on itself.
No, thank, thank you for that. Uh, and I'm glad you, you mentioned that this is one part of a solution, but building more housing is going to be needed as well. I like how you mentioned though too, that, something I didn't think about. Uh, if this program exists and there are people that wanna sell their home, they know they can go to this entity directly, have a seamless, maybe more cost-effective, maybe not, you know, no offense to real estate agents, not even need a real estate agent, sell the property and do good by this property now being deeded uh, as uh, a- affordable. So that, that, that could be a, a, a way of, like you said, getting a lot more houses part of the program that aren't even available right now if you went on, on Zillow. Uh, one other thing I wanted to ask you, I, I, I know you mentioned it's important for the revenue from the rents to go back into the program to then be, you know, self-sustaining. But could you see in the future, any part of this program being a, a rent-to-own concept? Uh, and that money generated could then, from the sale, could also go in-
You know what, um, what a great question. Uh, there are some really, really innovative things out there. I, I was just reading about um, one in the private sector that, where there, people invest in housing and they take tenants in and the tenants actually, there's one model where the tenants, when they, when they pay their portion of the rent on time, or if their portion is the entire rent, they pay on time and they um, are essentially are good, there's some metrics for being a good tenant, um, that they actually start to get credits that are like set aside for them for the future for them to then be able to buy either the own, either the unit they live in or another unit. And so thi- this vehicle had, because it's, because I envision it in a, in CHFA, which is a quasi-public, I think we'll, we'll have the flexibility to do exactly what you're talking about, to also at some point create opportunities for people to move from tenancy to ownership, which is really, really important for dealing with the wealth gap and a number of things. So the short answer, yes, I, this, this structure within a housing authority within CHFA allows for the flexibility to do that, and I think it should do that in out-years, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Representative, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Turco. Anybody else for the first time? Uh, I would like to ask, who pays the taxes on these properties?
Yeah, uh, that's, that's a great question. So the fund actually pays it, and that's one of the, the benefits to this idea is that um, the municipality is not gonna lose a dime in property tax. I mean, because one of the concerns is you're, you're gonna go out, buy units and then deed-restrict them affordable. You gotta worry about our cities and towns saying, hey, hey, oh, wait a second, you just took that off the property tax rolls, um, we don't, we maybe don't want that. So um, the idea is that after this fund has paid the property taxes, the mortgage, the maintenance issues, any renovation costs, the lending costs, all the, all the costs of ownership, in many cases with these Section Eight and RAP programs, if this is done right, there is still profit left over for the fund after it's paid the taxes and everything else to recapitalize itself to do more. So the benefit of this is no property tax hit to our cities and towns, none, but real permanent affordability for them.
But through this fund and the state, the state would be paying- But through this fund and the state, the state would be paying the property taxes, is what you're saying?
Well, the fund would be paying, would be essentially be paying the property taxes, yes.
So it would pay the property taxes upfront, but once this fund is self-sustaining, the state would no longer be paying the taxes, right?
Yeah, so I, I guess what I would say is when the fund acquires ownership of, of a property and deed restricts it affordable, it takes on all the costs of that property, including, including the property taxes. But it's also immediately getting the rental income. So instead of the rental income going to a private landlord, it's going to that fund. And it is my view that the rental income will exceed the cost of those property taxes. So in a way, you could say it's this quasi-public, you know, this housing authority under CHFA is paying the property taxes and that's, you know, being capitalized with an initial state investment, yes. But, but really, over time, it's really, I would argue, the federal government is paying the property taxes to our municipality, right? The federal government's the one paying for the Section 8 voucher that's being used to cover all the costs, including taxes. So from my view, how great is it if, if we're, if we're leveraging federal resources and saying, thanks, federal government, you're going to, you're going to pay the property taxes on this unit and the municipality in Connecticut are whole, how great is that?
Thank you. Representative Scott for the second time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question is, and I'm not a housing provider, so I don't know 100% how this works, but from a state standpoint, you rent a property and you have to claim that on your taxes. You, you, you sold it, you rented it for 15 or $2,000 a month.
Yeah.
And you got to pay taxes towards that. In this scenario, it's going to be affordable housing, 100% affordable housing, is that correct?
Great question.
Well, my question, so my question is yes or no, is it 100% affordable housing?
I, I would love the committee's input on that question. I think that, I think that's an open question in this proposal. I will say that in my meetings with CHFA, they expressed interest, for example, in could this fund purchase a three-family house, right? And two of the three units, maybe our market rate, and one is deed restricted affordable. They asked me, could this fund do that? And they seemed interested maybe in, in potentially doing that. And I thought, yes, because it's still going from a three-family house where none of the three units were affordable to now having one out of three affordable. So I, I'm open to the policy prerogatives of this committee as to how they want to handle that, but my initial answer would be, it wouldn't have to be 100% affordable. It could have the flexibility to buy a three-family and deed restrict one of the, one of the apartments affordable and leave the other two market rate so that it can make money and create more affordable housing.
Yeah, and I, I think from a local municipality standpoint, the taxes might be good, but I do worry, if you have 1,000 units and on average they're rented at $2,000 a, a, a month, and now it's affordable and it's down to $1,000 a month, I don't see how the state's getting made whole in terms of the, the taxes that's going to be from the generation of the, the revenue for that individual company that was previously managing that property, but now it's a state and it's only at 1,000. So I don't think, unless you could tell me the opposite, the math would work out for the state, it might work out for the property if the value didn't go down any because of now the only affordable.
I think I could answer that if it, yeah. So, so right now, if a private landlord owns a condo and the fair market rent is 2,000 a month, and that condo owner makes money renting it out for 2,000 a month after they pay all their expenses and it's lucrative for that condo owner. If this fund, Propel CT buys that condo, they, in most cases, will be able to also rent it for 2,000 a month because Section 8 and RAP will pay fair market rents for what the fair market rent is zip code. So in most scenarios, the rental income will actually not go down, but the difference is perhaps before Propel CT buys this unit, it's a private landlord renting it to a private marketplace tenant who can afford 2,000 a month themselves. So that's not, that's, that's a person that's got some resources. But once Propel CT owns it, now it's a, it's rented to somebody with a RAP certificate or a Section 8 voucher, now you're creating affordability in a unit where that affordability opportunity didn't, didn't exist before. Does that, did that answer your question a little bit? There might be some loss to your point, and I think it's a fair point you've raised, Representative Scott.
No, I appreciate that. That goes back to 100% versus not 100%. So I appreciate that. And I was just putting more to put on the record and like, we need to look into that and potentially make sure, well, the municipalities might be fine, the state might not be 100%. What would you classify this trust as being? Is it quasi-public? Like what would your classification be or what would the classification be of this? Because I'm going to get you, so that piece, and then who has the oversight and who does the auditing of all these dollars? Like who sees that and make sure that's running properly? Because if it's CHFA or is it Department of Housing or who it might be, depending on what classification it is?
Yeah, so my, my thinking is that it's, you know, it's essentially a housing authority because housing authorities, as I understand it, the way they're, they're constituted, they have the flexibility to do everything that I've described already. So that's already sort of a relatively flexible vehicle that has a public good mission. And there used to be this housing authority in CHFA. So it's very easy to just turn back on something that was turned off. So I, so I'd envision a housing authority. In terms of the oversight, you know, I, I think I'd like to look to the, the wisdom of this committee for their advice on that. I, obviously, I, my vision was that it would be managed by experts from, from all of the relevant areas of expertise that are needed. So, you know, I could envision even the legislature potentially having, having seats on, on the entity that's managing this. Certainly the state treasurer is one that logically comes to mind, you know, he's already responsible for 50 billion in state pension funds to sort of make sure the fiduciary side of it is being managed properly. But I also think you need people that are in charge, that are appointed from an oversight perspective, that are making sure like, things like tenants are being treated fairly, that the properties are safe, right? That there are safety inspections, right? So I could envision potentially an oversight role for DOH, potentially CHFA, potentially legislature, but I think that's an open question. This is a new idea and I'd, I'd love your, your input and thoughts on, on how to structure it so that the oversight achieves both goals, that it makes money for itself to do more good, but also that, that its processes are efficient and effective and that tenants are being treated fairly.
Thank you.
Maybe a landlord and tenant advocate each on, on the board as well, frankly. I don't know.
Thank you, Representative. One, one more question to follow up on that because you're talking about all these possibilities of folks overseeing this.
Yeah.
Who oversees it in Maryland?
That's a good question. I, you know, in, in Maryland, it's a housing authority that's building the units, borrowing and then, and then keeping, and then keeping ownership and collecting the rents. I, I think the housing authority probably, it's probably a Department of Housing in Maryland, I would imagine.
Is that a housing authority that was already established or was it established as?
I think, you know what, I'll do, I'll, I'll look more carefully at the Office of Legislative Research's report on this, which they did, which was wonderful. Shout out to them for doing great research on this idea, by the way. They did outstanding job. But, but I, I will look more into that. I believe the housing authority already existed and just realized that they wanted to be, I presume they realized that they were tired of constantly spending money and never getting any back to do more good, and they decided, let's just get into the ownership game ourselves. So I think they're probably regulated by the Department of Housing in Maryland, but let me research that and get back to the committee with that answer. It's a really great question, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And seeing no other questions from members, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Next is Maria Weingarten online.
Good morning, everybody. Wow, what a really interesting discussion today. Lots of comments I have on these things. So I'm going to start with Kathy Austin's discussion of HB 1422. Totally agree with her that this should not have been used by an outside developer advocate that created this. And, and the developer advocate is Open Communities Alliance, just so we're clear. If you look to my testimony, which I'll be providing later today, I have links provided to look at what they've used as the, for their modeling of the categories, but their data is very outdated. And it was, you know, 2018 to 2020, some stuff, I think from 2008 even. So it was outdated information. So I'm really glad that Kathy had put this bill forward. And what I would suggest, it needs to be an independent and transparent process. You really need to then, once you have what those numbers are, really consider, they have to be evaluated and then sampled for reasonableness and, and to ensure that it encourages economic growth for our entire state, as she mentioned, not just, you know, you know, assuming stagnation. So, and you must consider infrastructure constraints, and I'm happy to discuss that more. The other bill that I'm coming up against here is HB 1267, which is an outside housing authority operating in another town without their permission. What, what we've heard, talked about by having a state housing authority doing it, that can, this can talk, this, my write-up on this bill would talk to why those, there might be some issues with that. I'd be concerned about some absentee landlord situation if you've got a state housing authority that maybe is not there in, with boots on the ground to, to manage the process. And I'd be more than happy to talk more about that because we, New Canaan have 100% affordable and we have purchased Avalon Apartments. So we've done this and I do have some suggestions if you ask me those questions. The last bill I want to talk about is HB 7112. And I'm against the idea that we would zone everything in the state as one acre zoning. That just doesn't work because there are areas of the state where you have ledge, where you have impermeable surfaces, where you have wetlands, where you have all these other things. A much better model is something that was put out by West Cog called a buildable square concept, which recognizes that all areas, even within a municipality, are not the same. So, you know, the way zoning developed was because there was areas where there's watershed, wetlands, reservoirs, and those had a higher acreage just to protect those natural resources. And I think we have to be very careful when we are the third smallest state, the fourth most densely populated already. And when West Cogs report on the 80% of the privately held public water supply and wetlands found that our state is grossly lacking in statewide protections of those privately held lands and we rely on our local land use zoning commissions and inland wetlands to protect.
Your three minutes have concluded. If you could please summarize. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please read my testimony on seven bills for this hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weingarten. Any questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, we, we appreciate your time. Breathing through it today. Next, we have Representative Nick Medipace.
Hello, honorable chairpersons, vice chairpersons and members of the Housing Committee. My name's Nick Medipace. I'm a resident of East Lime and I'm the state representative for the 37th House District. I'm here to voice my strong support for Senate Bill 1423, now establishing a task force to decide the regulation of the corporate acquisition of residential property because I have seen firsthand how necessary I feel this policy is for our communities. Large-scale corporate acquisitions of residential properties are becoming more and more common in Connecticut and municipalities lack the tools to understand their impact fully. As a locally elected official, I've spoken with town leaders who are concerned about rising housing costs, property maintenance issues and the long-term stability of their communities, yet they often lack precise data and resources to take meaningful action. Most POCs, CDs do not deal directly with this type of property acquisition and current, and certainly not on the scale that we have seen in our state. Senate Bill 1423 addresses this challenge by requiring the Office of Policy Management develop a moderate, a model municipal ordinance that will help towns track and respond to corporate ownership of residential properties. This bill seeks to form a task force to ensure that municipalities have access to reliable data and a framework to make informed decisions. This legislation is about empowering communities with knowledge and giving them, the towns the tools they need to protect housing opportunities for residents. I urge the committee to support Senate Bill 1423 and I refer to you for my, excuse me, I refer you to my written testimony for four details. In addition, I have been very interested in the bills in which this committee has agreed to public hearings, both today and in previous hearings. I'm excited to support them when they lead the committee. I commend the chairs for all the work to improve the everyday lives of people here in our great state and the clerks for their excellent work running these hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions from members? Representative Corbus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Representative Medipace, fellow freshman. It's nice to see you. I just had a question about this and that was, is there a particular, there, there may be, or can we agree or can we discuss that there may be some benefits? I understand that there can definitely be detriments, but how do you address the issue that some of these corporate entities who have some scale? I agree that absentee landlords may not be ideal for our state, but how do you address the fact that some of these entities with larger scale and larger capital may actually be able to make a dent in our affordable housing issues better than the one-offs? Could you discuss that?
Yeah. And Representative Corbus, like I said, I think that this, this task force is a large part of that. And you're right, corporate acquisition does not need to be a bad thing of residential properties. What I'm really seeking, or I said, what this bill I feel is really seeking is just trying to be able to help towns navigate this issue because you're very much right, there are going to be good acquisitions, there are going to be ones that could be problematic based on, you know, what the, the group has done in the past, whatever it might be. And this is mostly just trying to help towns navigate through that. It's the same thing that we would see on a much smaller scale. You know, we're not typically going to, you know, a seller's not always going to agree to sell a property to someone if that person has, you know, very, very little financial backing to have this. And I think it's really important for us to be giving the tools to these towns so they can, I guess, validate these types of acquisitions. So I suppose the goal is very much to help towns find these good acquisitions and as well to find the bad ones.
Through you, Mr. Chair. And the part of the bill that talks about creating a separate bidding process for corporate entities, that seems to suggest that they would, you know, their impact on the market, which may be their ability to pay more, which may benefit our state, their, their ability to participate in bidding processes. What do you, do you have a, a view for how separating the bidding processes might go? Or is it just one of the things that the task force should look at without sort of any end game in mind?
I, I guess I would say overall that I, I suppose I do have a little bit of an idea of it, but I would say that that is definitely something that the task force should, should very much be in charge of. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on how these types of acquisitions go, and I would hope that the task force would come up with that. I would say like, for my envision is, is kind of how it's described in here is that we would be trying to have this separate vision to kind of keep things open and honest. But again, I, I do definitely defer that to the task force would be the one developing the knowledge of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions? Seeing none, Representative Medipace, thank you for your time. I also want to say thank you because you're parked in your car. Just want to make a note to anybody who's testifying before us later today or in the future, if we do see you in your car and you're moving, we will not let you testify. We don't want to, we want to make sure people are, are being safe.
Okay.
Next is.
I guess you're welcome then? Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Next is Hugh Bailey.
Thank you to the members of the committee for the chance to testify today. My name is Hugh Bailey. I am the policy director at Open Communities Alliance. We are a civil rights nonprofit focused on housing. I'm here to talk today in favor of Bill 7112 and in opposition to SB 1422. With 7112, there is one aspect that is a little troubling, that is self-certification of a housing unit's inspection by a landlord. It seems like that would not be in the best interests of tenants and it could be ripe for abuse, but beyond that, there are many provisions worth supporting. The wastewater provision, it makes sense to encourage towns to extend sewer lines to mixed-income housing developments and to create a fund for that purpose. And on the issue of lot sizes, I think one thing to be clear about is that people would still be perfectly free to build homes on multiple acres of land, as much as they were able to buy. This wouldn't limit any, anything like that. But the biggest driver of housing costs in the state of Connecticut is the land itself, especially in the job-rich areas of Connecticut. And just as importantly, there is really no need for such large lots for any kind of health or safety basis. It's true that septic systems take up more space than connection to a sewer line, and if there's no public water supply, if you need a well, that also requires a lot more space. It doesn't require two acres. There's really no combination of factors that necessitates two acre zoning, which is common in many parts of Connecticut. Large lot zoning really does not protect health and safety, but it does serve to exclude. Finally, I'm speaking against SB 1422 on the Connecticut Opportunity Map. The language of the bill is, is vague. Certainly, economic potential is worthwhile to support, but it is subject to change on short notice. The map. Um, the map itself, it doesn't make value judgments. Um, it's only about resources. Uh, that's something that the state already measures in many different ways. This is certainly not unique in that aspect, uh, and people certainly will define opportunity in different ways. Um, the map was developed in partnership with CHAF and DOH, and I think it's important to remember that it's just one of many factors driving where affordable housing investments are made, those decisions. Uh, agencies also typically consider infrastructure, sewers, uh, costs, and whether the project can leverage other resources. Uh, also, it's worth noting that CT Data Collaborative, Collaborative, the, the state's data contractor, did the original mapping and has worked on the update. Uh, OCA did not do the mapping ourselves. Uh, but the Opportunity Map does try to center the well-being of the individual. And that's based on fifty years of social science research going into showing how various census tract locations will affect the lives of the people who live there, especially children. And that's why there's a focus on placing low-income housing in these high-resource districts. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any questions? Nope. Seeing no questions. Thank you so much for your testimony. And next, Representative Sims?
He's not online.
No, I don't see. Um, next we have, um, Alani Fletcher. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me. Apologies. I'm here to speak on behalf of Bill 7110 in support of. My name is Jalani Fletcher. I'm a representative and tribal councilman for the Eastern Pequot Tribal Nation. Uh, this bill is very important to our, the state-recognized tribe, or all tribal nations in, uh, in Connecticut, as this allows us to be able to create, amend our relationship moving forward with the state and create opportunities for our people to be able to bring our people home, to be able to, again, exercise a right to be able to, to, to sustain and be self-sustaining on our nation and be able to take that initiative to be able to create the foundations necessary for us to facilitate the resources. Sorry, my voice is a little dry. To facilitate the resources that are given to us by the state to be able to become, again, self-sufficient and take that burden off of the state, while also being able to bring those resources home to be able to create a foundation for our people. Thank you. I'm sorry. I had no water. We have, I always had a tenuous relationship with the state and only because of the lack of communication in the past. And this is a tremendous opportunity for us to be able to move forward in creating and forging new relationships between the state and tribal nations. Um, I will not take up too much of your time. I would express how passionate I am about this and how necessary this is for all of us to be able to, to bring these resources home and to be able to give our people these, as citizens of the state of Connecticut, but also citizens of our tribal nations. And I believe I'd like to yield that time. I, I expressed my passion and my support. And I'm truly honored to be able to have this opportunity to speak before you. And I'm truly honored that you would give us the time to be able to express our passion in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fletcher. Um, any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Oh. Oh, you do? Okay. Go right ahead, Representative Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, just in the title, it talks about the act appropriating, um, funds for housing, uh, to state-recognized tribes. Does the state currently actually have any funding that helps in this arena?
That's problematic. And the reason why this is billed as so important is because of that. We've been placed under the relationship with the state, uh, from delegated from one, um, overseer-type relationship and intermediary for quite some time. And we, initially, our relationship with the state is one that's supposed to be direct with the governor and the government and not one through intermediaries such as DEEP or the Department of Welfare. So this again allows us to be able to recreate, uh, re-establish our relationship with the state of Connecticut from state to sta- uh, state to state relations. Instead of having those intermediaries which create and obfuscate our ability to get those resources that are supposed to be allocated to us statutorily.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not quite understanding the direct, uh, relationship between you and the state. Is there, does the state directly, um, help, uh, with, uh?
No.
Okay. That's the bottom line. Okay.
I apologize. This is.
That works for me.
Thank you for me. So, apologies.
All right. Well, uh, thank you. And I wish you success. I mean, we need to build housing for everyone in the state of Connecticut.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other. Thank you so much, sir. Next we have Edward Pinto. I do not see online.
He's online. He's being promoted.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Pinto. Go right ahead, please.
Uh, and, uh, on, uh, HB 7113. If there's one takeaway I'd like to, uh, leave you with, it's that Connecticut needs to legalize starter homes. Starter homes both, uh, sell for less and rent for less because they use, uh, they're on less land and, uh, they have smaller living areas. We estimate that, uh, HB 7113 uh, would result in at a minimum lot size of five thousand, as the bill currently reads, an additional five hundred homes per year. That's an increase of about seven percent over the two thousand ten to two thousand twenty-three levels. We actually looked at all the homes that were built, single-family detached homes built in Connecticut over that time period to come up with these estimates. We suggest that, uh, at a minimum lot size of thirty-five hundred square feet for single-family, uh, detached and two, two-to-four, uh, unit homes and twelve hundred square feet for town homes, that would result in a total of nineteen hundred additional homes per year, or nineteen thousand additional homes over ten years. Uh, we also suggest that backyard cottages and accessory dwelling unit legalization could result in about two hundred and fifty, uh, homes per year. Uh, these additional homes would be family-sized, uh, with single-family detached and town homes averaging nineteen hundred square feet for single-family detached and fifteen hundred square feet for, uh, single-family attached. Uh, both the large enough for, in the case of fifteen hundred square feet, a three, uh, uh, three-bedroom, uh, home. Uh, single-family detached homes, um, like five point seven, uh, homes per acre, which is about what you'd get with the five thousand minimum, uh, would sell for about thirty percent less than the ones that got built, uh, in, um, Connecticut over the time period I mentioned earlier. We took into account limiting to only homes that were on a half acre or less to account for, uh, in general, access to water and sewer. Um, and if you were to go to twenty-five homes on town home, the twenty-five homes rate for town homes, they would sell for fifty percent less. Uh, and that would result in a home price of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or about half of what, uh, the new single-family detached homes sold for in, uh, Connecticut, which, um, I noted the earlier comment about, uh, trying to build at the three to five hundred thousand dollar, uh, price point. Um, I would note that in nineteen forty, forty-one percent of Connecticut households lived in two-to-four unit and town home structures. Um, and that, uh, returning, uh, more to light tech density, uh, is very important. Otherwise, where will our children and grandchildren live? Thank you.
Um, thank you. I don't see any questions. Did you submit written testimony, sir?
I did.
Okay. Much appreciated. I'd look forward to reading it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, the committee.
Yep. Next we have Cassandra Kiola. You are online. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Thank you all and good afternoon. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, we are.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, as I was announced, my name is Cassandra Kiola. I'm also known as Small Bear Warrior within my tribe, the Golden Hill Pagoset Tribal Nation of Connecticut. And as a state-recognized tribe, I am supporting the Bill 7110. Our resources are very limited, um, sometimes little to none, uh, but our perseverance and our strengths are, are not. And to date, state-recognized tribes have had many, many challenges when trying to build a relationship with the state on a government level. And togetherness is at the heart of indigenous peoples. And a direct result of passing this bill will assure the necessary avenues are created in which my tribe and the other tribes can have clearer access to services and resources. The bill will not only just simply provide shelter, but it will open space for shared values, mutual support, participation, engagement, and also build relationships within the tribe and its surrounding community. History has shown that despite the government displacement, um, disillusion, and sometimes even disdain for my peoples, the threads for the need of togetherness are strengthened and stretched, but they still remain intact. By putting this proposal into actionable law, the state of Connecticut will not only be a part of a historic moment, but will also live up to its duty to advocate for its native communities. And this is that importune moment where you can shift from further division and move towards congruence instead. Allowing us to have this appropriation of funds to build these structures and homes also helps not now in the current climate, but also for future generations and in native communities. We do like to think seven generations ahead. Um, so I do fully support this bill. I agree with studying and surveying the land to see how sustainable it is. My tribe in particular has acreage in Colchester, two hundred, and a quarter acre in Trumbull. I do know the land is sustainable, um, because of the structures that are already on them and have been there. The quarter acre is the oldest running reservation in the state of Connecticut and has always had structure or structures on it. Um, and I'd like to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of my tribal nation and Connecticut.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Seeing no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just walked in. There you are. Attorney Podolsky, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry. I was out of the room when my name was called. Let me, now, now I have to figure out what I'm talking to you about. Um, uh, my name is Rachel Podolsky. I'm a lawyer with, uh, Connecticut Legal Services. I'm here on behalf of the legal aid programs. I have computer problems uploading my testimony, so it, it may not yet be on the website, so you may not have seen it as yet. Um, there are four bills I wanted to speak to you about, and I have tried to do them very briefly. Um, Senate Bill number thirteen forty is the one about the time limit for filing, um, a fair rent commission complaint. It's interesting because I believe there's landlord testimony, um, against it on the ground that people should not be able to file a complaint after you've signed the lease. Um, I also testify against it because you already are allowed to file a, a complaint, uh, even if you've signed the lease. And you actually have to be allowed to do that because it would really interfere with fair rent commission operations. You can file the complaint because something is not being done in compliance with the lease. For example, the landlord isn't complying with the housing code or he's not making repairs. Or, uh, an example that I think is, that a real example where somebody filed a complaint because it was a building with an elevator and the elevator stopped working. And it wasn't a code violation because there was no code requirement that you had to have a working elevator. But it was part of the agreement when they moved in, which meant a significant service that you were supposed to be, that was supposed to be covered by the rent. The rent was no longer fair in relation to the fact that the services declined. You couldn't bring that complaint if you, if, if, under this bill, because it would be more than thirty days after you signed the lease. But there's no question in my mind that at least most commissions would, would certainly accept that complaint and deal with it. So, for, for opposite reasons, uh, I think, um, our position would be, uh, no, to take no action on that particular bill because it implies that you can't bring a complaint once you sign the lease. One of the, we, we know a lot of people are essentially intimidated in signing leases because they're told they're going to get evicted if they don't sign the lease. And they don't know there's a fair rent commission. And when they found out about it, they want to file a complaint. Um, so, anyway, so that's on that bill. Um, House Bill number seventy-one twelve, which is the omnibus bill, we support it generally. Um, there, in my written testimony, there's some, we raised a couple of questions about section eight, section eight of the bill, which deals with the RAP program and section sixteen, which deals with a program, um, a private program for, um, for, for paying, uh, for, for private rent subsidies, uh, where it's not clear if that means they're going to be paid out in cash or as vouchers. Uh, we would just suggest you look at that carefully. On Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which we support, that really caught of, that deals with the fact that under existing law, a la- a landlord cannot, um, charge you a variable amount for the amount of uh, utility service you're using unless it is being metered. So if you don't have a separate meter, they cannot, if, they can't just make up a formula. They can build it into the rent. I mean, it's an overhead, an operating cost if the landlord's paying the bill. But you can't present it as if you're individualizing it based on individual uses because that's not true. It's just a made-up formula.
Read for your three minutes have expired. If you could please summarize. Thank you.
Okay. And I would, okay. And the fourth bill, Senate Bill, um, twelve sixty-seven, we support. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions I can answer for you.
Mr. Podolsky, thank you for your testimony. Any questions from members? Representative Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, thank you for your testimony, uh, Ravy. It's always good to see you. Uh, and just because I'm a little hard of hearing, I guess, um, I didn't hear the second part of, um, House Bill seven one one two. You, um, said that your testimony would focus on, uh, section eight of the bill. And there was another section that I didn't quite hear that you said that, uh, we should consider.
Uh, you should take, uh, you should give some thought to, to how section sixteen of the bill is written. And that's the, the title. It's, let me see if I got the name of the program on that. Uh, it's called, uh, the Direct Rental Assistance Pilot Program.
You know, what's specific to that, that you think we should pay direct attention to?
Well, it's, it's, it's not clear whether it's, it, it's apparently a private, private, nonprofit-funded program. Um, so it doesn't use state money. Uh, it, it apparently draws from people who are on the state section eight waiting list. Um, and there, so there are questions about, um, is it, is it a voucher program or is it a cash program? Because that makes a difference in the degree of certainty that the cat, that the money will actually get paid as rent. Um, there are questions about how it impacts eligibility for other programs. Like, could, is there a risk of losing el- uh, uh, eligibility for so, a, a need-based program because this is treated as cash rather than as a, a state benefit? Um, I think these things are all work, workable. And I, I actu- actually spoke with, um, Representative Luxembourg about this in the hallway. Um, and so I think that, that, that there's an awareness that these things need to be approached carefully to make sure they don't have unintended negative consequences. But that's, that's what that is about. And so my comment really is not for or against it. But, but take a close look at it to make sure that it's going to work and it's not going to have any unintended adverse consequences.
Right. And, and thank you. And, Mr. Chair, even, uh, he mentioned Representative Luxembourg, which brought me back to your comments. I would love to have him back on the Housing Committee, not necessarily take your job as our chair because we're really happy about you being our chair. So, don't think that I was trying to, uh, uh, replace you or start a coup or anything, but, um, uh, so please know that, um, uh, we're happy that you're here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. I was just, I was just having a little fun. That's all. Senator Marks.
Thank you as always for testifying. For thirteen eighty-three, can you just explain the, um, utility charges? What is the current problem? Like, I don't understand. We didn't really have advocates come and talk to us about this. So what is happening now that we need to fix?
Um, I don't think you, I think this is a bill that you don't have to do any, uh, that's, this is a, this is a, falls in, I think, in the category of optional bills. Um, I, I mean, I, I maybe I shouldn't say that about a bill I'm, that I'd say, telling you I support. But, um, under, for a long time in the utility statutes, which are in Title sixteen, there's been a provision that says, uh, you can't, um, sh- you, you cannot individually charge tenants for utilities that are being paid for by the landlord, not by the tenant, by the landlord. You can't individually charge them unless the utility is serving only the property that is, the portion of the property that's being rented by the tenant. So if you have, for example, a water meter, as, as most landlords do, a water meter for the whole building, that you can't make the tenant pay you the water bill. That's your water bill. So what land, what some landlords would do, and they would do this with heat. They'd have no, one oil furnace for a three-family house. And they would have one of the three tenants take the oil account in that tenant's name. And maybe they would, they might give them a rent adjustment or something or, or not. But the not, the idea was the other tenants were supposed to pay their share to that tenant. But of course, the other tenants wouldn't pay. And now all of a sudden, you've got one tenant who's paying an, uh, uh, an oil bill for three, three apartments. So the legislature said, no, no, you can't do that. So the legislature said, no, no, you can't do that. It, it has to be individually metered. The question has arisen, does that mean you have to have the tenant's own direct account with the, let's say, the water company? Or could you have water sub-metering with, and that's still sort of an open question. But the, the statute in, in the utility stat, section says unless the utility is going exclusively to the tenant's apartment, you cannot have the, you cannot charge the tenant separately. It, it becomes a landlord-tenant issue because it parallels, because part of what that utility statute says is the landlord cannot, cannot do this. So I don't know whose proposal this was, but the proposal is to put into the part of the landlord-tenant act that talks about what landlords can and cannot put into the lease to confirm what's already the law under the utility statutes. And there was just recently a Supreme Court case where, where the very question was decided as to, in, as an interpretation of, of that utility statute. What exactly did it mean? And the conclusion of the Supreme Court, it was actually a divided opinion. But in the conclusion of the Supreme Court was that reading the statute, what the statute says is you cannot make up your own allocation plan unless you're going to meter it. So you, so they didn't address the issue of sub-metering because that, that landlord was not sub-metering. But that landlord was just saying, well, apartment, maybe they were using, I don't know what they were using, actually. So they, they might've been using number of, number of residents or amount of floor space or, they'd made up something that, that was going to be sort of a substitute for the meter, sub-metering. And then it got presented as if, well, you're only being charged billed for what, for what you use. But it didn't follow that that was what you used because it was based on some other formula. And the Supreme Court confirmed, no, the statute says you can't do that. So this basically just puts what is already the law into a second place in the statute. At least that's my understanding.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. So it's just codifying what the Supreme Court has just recently?
Well, it's, it's codifying what, the Supreme Court was interpreting an existing statute. And so it's sort of codifying in a second place the existing statute.
That was very interesting. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from members? Seeing none, Ms. Podolsky. Thank you for your time, and I'm sure we'll see you on Thursday.
Thank you very much.
Next is Brenda Gere. There you go. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon. Chairpersons and esteemed members of the committee. My name is Brenda Gere, and I'm the current vice chairwoman of Eastern Pequot Tribal Nation. I am also a citizen of the United States of America, state of Connecticut, and mostly, most importantly, the citizen of the United, of Eastern Pequot. I come before you today in unwavering support of Bill 7110 and act appropriating funds for housing in state-recognized tribes, requiring each tribe to conduct a study and create a report and concerns concerning the care and the management of reservation land and tribal funds. For centuries, native people have been displaced, disenfranchised, and denied the basic right to live on the land of our ancestors. Today, many tribal members find themselves unable to return to their homelands due to the lack of housing, infrastructure, and economic opportunities. The passage of this bill is the first step in rectifying these injustices and setting the foundation for meaningful conversations about the native sovereignty, housing access, and the systemic barriers that have kept tribal members away from their rightful home. The study proposed in this bill is not just about numbers and data. It's about the lives of our people, our elders, our children, and seven generations ahead, who deserve the dignity of returning to the land that owns, that holds their rich history, culture, traditions, and spirit. By supporting this bill, we are acknowledging the struggles faced by native people and actively working towards solutions that empower us rather than oppress us. We are taking a stand to say that native voices do matter and our right to live and care for our own land should never be compromised. Furthermore, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, also known as DEEP, the overseer of our reservation, should not have control over our land. Tribal nations have existed since time memorial. We have been stewarding the land in ways that are sustainable, responsible, and deeply rooted in respect in our relationship for our land and all living things that we are connected to. We do not need nor want external agencies to dictate how we should manage our own land. Historically, DEEP has not kept their statutory responsibility to the tribes in Connecticut. In saying that, allowing oversight from entities that do not have our best interest at heart has proven to be detrimental to mark, to our communities. We must affirm our sovereignty of tribal nations and ensure that the care and management of our land remains in our hands. The passage of this bill is not just about appropriations. It's about justice, respect, and the recognition of tribal nations as the rightful stewards of our lands and futures. It is about creating pathways for our people to return home and ensuring the future generations can thrive with their own communities. In addition, it is very difficult, almost impossible for current residents or tribal members that want to live on their homelands to obtain-
Your three minutes have expired. If you could please summarize, thank you.
Homelands to obtain or secure funding because it's sovereign land and the financer has no jurisdiction to take the home if the note is not paid. Lastly, I urge you to stand on the right side of history and support Bill 7110. Let us not delay justice any longer. Let us take the step together and build a future where native people in Connecticut can return home, live with dignity, and reclaim what has always been ours. We do have one of the oldest continuous, continuously occupied reservations in the country. We were deeded our reservation in 1683, long before state of Connecticut was Connecticut. Thank you so much for the privilege of your time and for allowing us to testify today before you.
Thank you very much for coming before us. Any questions from members? Representative Roberts, followed by Representative Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just had, um, two quick questions. You mentioned, uh, uh, DEEP and it having oversight. What areas of your, um, reservation lands does DEEP have oversight that you object to?
They have oversight of our reservation in all aspects.
Every aspect?
In all aspects, yes. We were at one time under the Department of Welfare. Um, and then I believe it was in the early eighties, we were transferred over to DEEP. So they are the overseers. And if you're familiar with the statutes, you'll see things like, um, like the governor, for instance, is supposed to notify us of grants that we're eligible to apply for, including housing. That has never been done. There are certain statutes, like I said, that we didn't write the rules, they did, or the state did. But they're not, they have not held up their end of the bargain. So there is no support, even though they're supposed to be the protectors of us as native people in Connecticut. That's the type of relationship that we should have. But the state of Connecticut is not following their own rules, if you will. And statutorily, they're supposed to make sure that we have clean running water, you know, suitable housing, that kind of stuff. And I, I can only speak for Eastern Pequot, but I can tell you that we're in a crisis. We have, you know, wells that are probably older than some of the folks in this room that are not maintained. And I understand that they also are wanting to change the regulations or the statutes on how they maintain and what they maintain on the reservation, such as if they built it or dug the well, then they will maintain it. I have a resident now that has been fighting to get a well because somebody in the sixties, we don't know who, this is what his grandfather said, threw a baby pig in his well. It sounds unreal, but it's, these are the reality. Um, and we can't get him a well through the state of Connecticut. Again, who are the overseers of our land and that are supposed to make sure that we have what we need to survive. So it's been a big issue, um, which is why I'm here today. Because I think it's, I think it's time, um, that you guys, you as legislators, understand the reality of what is happening in your own state within these borders. I don't need to talk about the relationship between the state and the tribes. If you know your history, you're going to know about it. I'm here to make things right. I want to rebuild that relationship because we can't go back to what happened yesterday. We only can do from today on, and that's what I'm here for. I want to work with the state. I want to work with the, the tribes and, and to rebuild that relationship. As a matter of fact, yesterday I met with the lieutenant governor. And one of the things that I recommended and suggested to her was that, you know, the legislators should get together annually with the heads of the tribes, the leaders of the tribes. Because there are so many legislators and Connecticut residents that are not educated about the tribes that are within these borders. And I think that it's long overdue, and I'm a big person on education. And I can't blame you because you don't know, but let me educate you. And that's what it's about, and that's why I stand here before you today. This is the fight of my life for my people. I am one of them, a resident that I've lived on my land for over 30 years. And I am one of those people that have a hole in my roof and have living with black mold. This is serious. We are in a crisis. It is very difficult to get any sort of funding when you're on the reservation because banks or any financer, you can't get funding regardless of what your credit is.
Well, thank you for, um, letting us know about this. I, as you said, there's probably a lot of legislators here who aren't aware of your current conditions. I, being one of them, was not aware, so I'm glad that I asked a question. And certainly the state needs to, uh, do better by working with, um, you. And there's one question that I've been, been wanting to ask somebody from a tribal nation for a long time. Certainly the state needs to, uh, do more, but at one point, the federal government, I believe, set aside, uh, a fund to actually honor, uh, the tribal nations for, uh, reparations, for lack of a better word. And it's, um, my understanding that, uh, the tribal nations never collected that money because they were insulted by the fact that every, um, deal they made with the federal government was broken over some period of time. And, uh, from the history that I understand, their fund has never been accepted. Do you know anything about that?
What I can tell you is that we don't, um, because we're a state-recognized tribe, one of the five in Connecticut, we don't really have, there's a lot that we're not eligible for as a state-recognized tribe, especially with federal grants, whether it has to do with education, housing, so on and so forth. So we have to deal with it on a state level. We do have, there are some things that we are eligible for. For instance, I myself, we administer a community service block grant. That's federal funding. And we, we provide emergency services for our, for our folks. But if the funds are limited, um, and we have a 1,250-member tribe, so you have to make it fair for everybody. So you can only stretch, you know, a little bit of money so far. But there's things that we're, we're not accessed, we don't have access to, and we're not eligible to apply for. Which is why in the statutes, the governor is supposed to let us know what grants that we can apply for and that we would be eligible to apply for, as well as help us with writing the grants and securing the funding. But that has never happened. I've been on council 33 years. And, and I assure you that it's never happened in the 33, 33 years that I've been leading this tribe. It's unfortunate, but it is what it is. And so, like I said, we are in a crisis. You know, there's, it's very difficult to get funding. And this is why it's so important. And I, and I, I can't tell you enough, you know, to thank you enough for the opportunity to be able to have this testify, testify in front of you, um, because that's how important it is. And I'm happy to educate anybody. I'll come back, I'll, you know, I'm happy to do that as well. Because I recognize that we have to do our part as well. So I'm happy to, I'll give you all my cards. You can reach out to me, um, anytime.
All right, well, thank you. And it sounds like it's long overdue for, uh, taking the time to actually study this and make whatever, um, whatever, um, changes we can to make life better for, um, you and all the people of your state, um, recognized tribe. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Butler. Representative Roberts.
Good evening, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good. Quick question. So first, I want you to, just truly appreciate you for coming out today and testifying, but also, you know, giving us the, the knowledge that some may not know, or educating them more.
Yes.
Um, I do have a question. I love that you said it's not even about the money. It's really about where people are living and, and the environments that we, that you guys have for your, your land. Just a, it might just be not even a question, just bring me through, you talked about banks. You talked about, you know, building. Bring me through, if I lived on the land right now and how if I got funding, what I would have to go through, minus the DEEP situation, because we know that they're in control of what is your land, which is a big brother, little sister type vibe, which is not really good, but would love if you could-
But that's a good analogy.
Absolutely, see, there we go. So if you can, bring me, bring me through, uh, if I give you some money and you want to build on your land, how do we go upon that when it comes to banks or anything like that?
Well, like I said, there have been, um, you know, some members that have had the financial wherewithal, you know? So they would go to the tribe. We do have a housing authority that is recognized by the federal government HUD. And the reason that is, and that's important is because, um, you know, we did receive our recognition in 2002. And then, um, through political influence of the state, um, more specifically Blumenthal and 29 towns, in 2005, it was taken away. So, um, at that time, we did have a, a housing authority. And we did receive $1.2 million HUD grant for housing. This was back in the late eighties, early nineties. However, because there was a dispute over leadership, that money was never allocated. They decided to hold back, which I think they did the right thing. Fast forward, we now are a merged tribe. So they took two fractions and they put us together. Um, and that was through the BIA. That's what happened through the recognition process. So we remain as one tribe, but as a state-recognized tribe. So we do have that, we still have that housing authority that is up and running. So if we have a tribal member that has the financial wherewithal to be able to build a home, which means they would have to pay for septic, sewage, power, all that stuff, which is not, it's incredibly expensive. They would, once they could prove that to the tribal council, then the tribal council would then allocate some land, a parcel, if you will, um, for them to build upon. That's the way we do it. That's the way it's been done. However, we went from 8,000 acres was our original or aboriginal, um, reservation. We now have 224.8 acres, which is, um, very rocky and hilly and stony. They don't call it North Stonington for nothing. Or Ledger, same thing. So it, it's really not very good buildable land. So, um, that, that's another day for another discussion. But, um, so, you know, we would have to allocate, um, a parcel, and we don't obviously give it. It's reservation land. So, um, I own my house and my garage, but I don't own the land. And there's about 12 to 15 of us that currently live on the reservation. But because the tribe cannot finance anything, um, members that have that financial wherewithal, they could if they are able to prove that they have the finances. Because we can't allow someone to go up there and live without a sewer or septic, you know, and, and the proper, proper stuff. So, um, we did receive 1.5 million from the state of Connecticut through DEEP about four years ago to help with infrastructure on the reservation, which will help, you know, maintain our wells or, or, um, you know, build additional wells to support the infrastructure that's going up on, on the reservation, our longhouse, our tribal house, tribal office type of stuff. So, and we're internally grateful for that. But that's, to answer your question, they'd have to have the financial wherewithal because you can't get it from a bank.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you for being here.
Any other questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, we appreciate your time and appreciate you coming down here.
Thank you guys so much for the privilege of your time.
Uh, next online, we have Gustav Kichlango.
Hi there. Thank you for letting me testify in front of you today. My name is Gus Kichlongo, and I have the privilege of being the president, CEO of the Towers at Tower Lane. And I would like to offer testimony in support of House Bill seven one one two. My ask is that this bill and any other housing policies or funding bills include provisions for housing specifically targeted to assist seniors whose incomes are between one fifty-one and two hundred, excuse me, fifty-one and one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income and are in need of support and care services. This adjustment would enable the local not-for-profit providers of support and care services to expand their impact to include seniors whose incomes are, put them into what is called the missing middle or the forgotten middle cohort. The missing middle or forgotten middle term refers to seniors whose incomes are too high to qualify for subsidies for housing and support services, and too low to enable them to live in traditional assisted livings or life care communities. This group of seniors are referred to as missing or the forgotten middle because they fall into a financial donut hole of Connecticut's community-based services for seniors. For clarification, I also would like to define support and care services. Support services would be the assistance of, for with housekeeping, laundry, meal preparation, personal emergency response systems. Care services would include assistance with a person's activities of daily living, such as bathing, dressing, toileting. In Connecticut, we have several housing with care options for seniors with little to no income. In the nineteen nineties, the Towers developed a model of affordable assisted living through applying the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders Medicaid waiver in a site with federally funded housing subsidies. In nineteen ninety-eight, the Connecticut Legislature passed a bill creating the four Connecticut Assisted Living Demonstration Pilot Sites based on the Towers model at the time. These sites and a few other of the state-funded congregate housing sites offer some options for seniors with incomes below fifty percent of the area median income. In Connecticut, we also have life care communities for seniors with very high incomes and assets. Additionally, we have assisted living facilities for seniors who have enough assets, usually after selling a home, to pay for private, to pay privately until their funds run out. When their funds do run out and their monthly incomes are at fifty-one percent of the area median income or higher, they find themselves in the donut hole of Connecticut's community-based services for seniors. What we need in Connecticut is more housing with support and care services specifically for seniors. The rents need to be at rates that are like the workforce housing units, and the services offered need to be at rates that they can afford. To potentially expand our model of services for seniors, the Towers has been exploring building a third building on our campus with a grant received from the community investment funds. Over this past year, we have developed a financial model for housing with support and care services that would target seniors with incomes between fifty-one percent.
Summarize the remainder of your testimony. Thank you.
Yep, and twenty, and one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. In essence, we have applied the workforce housing income brackets to retired seniors who would also have the additional expenses of their care and support. The incomes of the workforce housing for younger individuals who are currently working are the same as the incomes for seniors who have worked their whole lives, saved the best they could, and would now find themselves in a place where they can't afford their housing and support services within Connecticut. So for the purposes of this bill, I would like to request a specific change to Section thirteen. This section authorizes the development and administration of Middle Housing Development Grant Pilot Program for public housing authorities to expand the availability of middle housing. Though we support this provision, we request that it is not limited to housing authorities. Please consider including local not-for-profits in addition to the housing authorities. This adjustment would enable providers like the Towers and some of our colleagues.
Your summary time has expired.
Okay. So in essence, what we're, so in essence, what we're asking for is to also have the funding that's available be considered for local housing, for local providers for support services. Because the housing authorities don't provide these kinds of services.
Come on, man.
Okay, I'm all set.
Be warned, we'll get you, we'll get you with some questions.
So tell you what, I'm also gonna, I'm gonna send this testimony in so you guys can take a look at it when you have a chance.
We appreciate it. Any questions from members of the committee? I have one. The, the folks who you named, the range that you named, can you just name that range again?
Yes, it's fifty-one percent to one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income.
And is there a specific portion of that, be it towards the higher end of that scale or the lower end of that scale where people are more, are missed more than others?
It's pretty much the gap between being able to be in a place that is subsidized and with care that is through the Connecticut Home Care Program and being able to afford a private assisted living or a life care community. So there's a whole bunch of people, actually nationally, within the next ten years, five point five million people will be at that age bracket of seventy-five and older in that income category. So it's becoming a real crisis because they don't have a way of paying for their care and their housing.
Understood. We appreciate, I appreciate that answer. Any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Kichlongo, we appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we have Duran Loracella. I don't see her online. Hopefully she'll get back to us. But I do see Frank DeFelice.
Good afternoon, distinguished senators and representatives of the Housing Committee. My name is Frank DeFelice. I currently serve as chairperson of the Regional Planning Commission for the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments and as the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Durham, Connecticut. This afternoon, I'd like to speak to you regarding some general comments on HB seven one one three. This is the act which permits municipalities to establish light touch density housing. First, the issue is with the title of the bill. This is really multifamily housing, and by changing the name or trying to make it sound like something different, we're not really solving the problem, which is that we need more affordable housing. One other thing regarding the grouping that is defined as this light touch housing is it attempts to group fourplexes and the like with one, two, and three-family dwellings. That's concerning because fourplexes are very much different building code-wise. In fact, anything above a two-family and in some cases a three-family dwelling is treated considerably different from a building perspective. But I think the, the most important thing about this bill that I want to communicate is when we look at line thirty-six, this is under Section one subsection four D of the bill. It states that municipal agencies shall not adopt, basically a different, several kinds of zoning standards that. And then we move down to line thirty-nine and forty, set a minimum or maximum unit size requirement. So the question here is, why does nearly every affordable housing bill include a requirement for the abandonment of the minimum dwelling size? This is already a statutory requirement that came into being following Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine. And the issue is that the state of Connecticut, even though the municipalities and their zoning regulations have taken these things out, the state of Connecticut continues to mandate a twenty-two-foot minimum width in Section eight dash two D three of the general statutes, if the dwelling unit is manufactured rather than built on-site. And that's really the heart of what I want to communicate to you today. There is absolutely no reason that that shouldn't be removed from the general statute to facilitate manufactured buildings that can be used as affordable housing, can be used as middle housing, can be used as multifamily housing. But if they're manufactured housing, they're, they are not allowed by, by the general statute. So the general comment here is even though that the bill specifies a minimum maximum size unit requirement that's not allowed in the zoning regulations, the state of Connecticut's
Three minutes have expired.
So the Section eight dash two D three of the general statute should be revised to remove the requirement for twenty-two feet minimum dwelling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeFelice. Any questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Sarah Fox online.
Good afternoon, Representative Felipe, Senator Marks, and distinguished members of the Housing Committee. I'm here today to testify support, in support of many of the provisions in House Bill seven one one two. As you know, homelessness has been on the rise. It rose thirteen percent this last year with nearly half of those being impacted being children and adults over the age of fifty-five. We currently have more than five thousand people across the state experiencing homelessness with, including five hundred children and nine hundred people who are unsheltered, many who are in warming centers today. Right now, we know we're facing a humanitarian crisis. We know that more than one in four people are being turned away from life-saving services. And some of the provisions here today, you know, they worth, it's worth really talking about them and bringing them forward. I specifically think that the, the data collection that is specific to LGBTQIA youth is critical and really important, bringing together our, our state agencies and ensuring that we have strong data representing this really vulnerable population. It will help us to be better understand gaps and services. I'd say I'd also, you know, point this towards something that it would be wonderful if the interagency council would, or current interior agency task force would in the future help us move towards. So that we clearly have a clear understanding in collaboration with the Departments of Housing, Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, and the Department of Children and Families, the data, and we ensure that, that LGBTQIA youth are no longer invisible within our homeless response system. Another key prevention strategy is in Section two, which focuses on reducing homelessness amongst people returning home from the carceral system. Housing is a strong predictor of whether someone successfully reintegrates into the community or whether they cycle back into the criminal justice system. This bill calls for a study offering tax credits to landlords. We know nationwide, this can have really positive results. And we must ensure that people returning home are able to access safe, stable housing. We also recognize that unsheltered homelessness cannot be ignored, and it should not be treated as an inevitable reality. When we think about extreme temperatures and, and whether it is summertime or it is wintertime, we need to have a response to ensure that we're able to bring people inside and ensure their safety. Over the past summer, we had several people pass away due to extreme temperatures and health issues. No one should be dying on the streets of Connecticut. We support a feasibility and a study to ensure that we can have the resources at hand and the investments necessary to ensure that we bring people inside. Advocates across the state, you know, we, we definitely want five million dollars annualized in cold weather response. But we are very open to expanding it to.
Remainder of your testimony.
Thank you. We are very open to expanding this to extreme weather as well so that we have the resources and provisions in place to bring people inside. I have more within my testimony, so please read it. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate you as well. Any questions or comments from members? Surprising. Seeing none, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Diane Loracella.
Thank you. Good afternoon. As you can see, I'm in my car. I'm sorry if I missed my initial calling. My name, for the record, is Diane Loracella. I live in Norwalk. Thank you, Co-Chair Felipe, other co-chairs, vice chairs, ranking members, and esteemed members of this great committee that is trying to do the work that has been needed for a long time. I really appreciate all what you're trying to do as far as giving people a safe, a safe place, a warm place, and in the summer, a cool place to live. I just wanted to lift up some of the bills that are before you today in my three minutes. I especially wanted to state that I haven't read the entire portion of Senate Bill one four two three. But I do believe that corporate acquisition of residential properties is causing huge problems in Connecticut. I live in southwestern Connecticut. It is nearly impossible to find affordable, truly affordable housing. I have a lot of friends that really, and seniors like myself, who really don't know where we will go in the next year or two or how we will handle our housing needs, yet we'd love to stay in our communities and in Connecticut. So I believe the regulation of corporate acquisitions is important, and I appreciate it being lifted up. I also wanted to lift up House Bill seven one one four and Senate Bill one two six three. Again, there needs to be places where residential units can be utilized in what I will call wasted space. Residential above retail is something that Norwalk had achieved by a zoning regulation and policy. And I do believe it would be important to take a look and make it as easy as possible to build not only affordable housing above retail, but safe housing, where people would be free from anyone wandering in from below, of course. I do believe that many of the malls that we rushed to build in the nineties should become and could become a combination of housing, school, as well as retail and commercial. Senate Bill one two six three has to do with residential conversions of commercial sites. And as long as they are safe and free of contamination, I say, let's do it. Lastly, I just wanted to state that it is so important to open up, and I noticed there is no bill on this, I believe, and it's been difficult to make my, even my own city and the zoning commission understand this, is that ADUs or accessory dwelling units, both detached and attached, if managed well, could be a very, very good way to add additional housing and reduce homelessness. And I do believe there is an ADU bill that you've heard or will hear in the future, but the bills that I just mentioned today.
Three minutes have expired. If you could please summarize. Thank you.
Certainly. Having a safe place to live is an important part of being human, and I really appreciate this committee for taking a look at these bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Any questions from members? Representative Roberts.
Thank you, Diane. I just wanted to say hi. Thank you for coming out and testifying today. It's Kadim.
Oh, I know. Representative Roberts, thank you for helping lift up this, this particular item with your caucus.
Thank you, Diane. And don't take it personally, but you're the first person to do it today. It happens all the time. It's Felipe, not Felipe. We pronounce the last E.
Thank you, sir. So noted.
Next, we have Sana Shah.
Care persons Felipe and Marks, ranking member Scott and Sampson, and distinguished members of the Housing Committee. My name is Sana Shah, and I'm the Director of Policy and Advocacy at the Connecticut Project Action Fund. Housing access is critical for thriving communities, families, and economies in our state. We therefore advocate for the passage of House Bill seven one one two and act concerning housing and homelessness and the rental assistance program with a specific focus on the direct rental assistance pilot program detailed in Section sixteen of the bill. This section establishes a pilot program initiated by philanthropic investments to deliver flexible cash assistance in lieu of traditional housing vouchers. The program is designed to evaluate its impact in reducing administrative costs, improving housing stability and mobility, and increasing landlord participation. Additionally, Section sixteen includes provisions that benefits, that prevent benefits cliffs and aims to expand the pilot sample size across the state by leveraging nearly equivalent state funds to match philanthropic contributions. This expansion is important for thoroughly This expansion is important for thoroughly assessing the effectiveness of direct rental assistance on a larger scale. So the Connecticut Project is facilitating a collaboration between the Connecticut Department of Housing, Norwalk Housing, Melville Charitable Trust, and a national policy research firm, M D R C, to launch a direct rental assistance pilot program in Connecticut benefiting approximately 50 households. This innovative pilot aims to provide flexible cash assistance directly to tenants, allowing families to secure housing that best meets their needs. Unlike traditional voucher programs, which pay subsidies directly to landlords and are often burdened by long wait lists, administrative complexity, and limited landlord participation, direct rental assistance offers a simpler, more predictable solution. By reducing administrative barriers and delivering timely support, direct rental assistance can help households avoid eviction, prevent homelessness, and may achieve greater housing stability and mobility. House Bill 7112 facilitates the philanthropic investment in this innovative approach by allowing the Department of Housing to administer the program directly, streamlining the process. It also ensures that assistance provided does not count as income. I know that was a question earlier today, which could otherwise disqualify recipients from other essential benefits that they are currently receiving. This pilot is designed to provide immediate relief to struggling families and will generate valuable research to evaluate whether direct payments to tenants are more effective than traditional vouchers. So with philanthropic partners leading the way, Connecticut has a critical opportunity to expand this work through additional state-supported pilots, helping more families while developing evidence-based solutions to address the state's ongoing housing crisis. Direct rental assistance provides predictable, ongoing support to renters, ensuring they can pay their rent and stay housed. Moreover, House Bill 7112 mandates direct rental assistance for recipients who are currently on the federal Housing Choice Voucher Program waiting list, focusing on families identified as needing immediate support but facing delays due to existing program limitations. Prioritizing these waitlisted families provides them with immediate relief and helps to reduce the backlog and the traditional voucher system. This pilot represents a significant opportunity for Connecticut...
Sana, your three minutes have expired. If you could please summarize. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
How easy was that? Any questions from members? Representative Roberts?
How you doing? Thank you for coming today and testifying. Just a quick question. Could you just give me a clear explanation of how the program actually works when it comes like the cash assistance portion of it? And just, you know, just want to see who's going to be helped at this point in time or how they're going to be helped.
Right, so, you know, currently, we're working in, you know, your wonderful area of Norwalk, and we have been in communication with the housing authority there. And so what the Connecticut Project wants to do is invest like our funds into a pilot program and instead of vouchers, and particularly, we're targeting families who are on the waiting list, providing them immediate support, we're giving them direct cash assistance and, you know, and testing the impact of receiving direct cash assistance. And so we'll be providing that funding. We are working with other philanthropic partners around the research portion of that as well to test the effectiveness. And, you know, there's, you know, certain barriers right now where we can't implement the program without enabling legislation that allows us to make sure that this doesn't get counted as income, so people don't face benefits cliffs. And also, it's less cumbersome actually going to the Department of Housing because public housing authorities have to go through HUD, and that's just like a longer process. And so we're hoping to streamline the process, you know, directly giving tenants cash to pay for their housing.
Thank you, Representative Roberts. Representative Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your testimony. It sounds very interesting. And I'm look forward to the results of the pilot. And after you leave Norwalk, you could always come to Waterbury and see what you could do there. So could you briefly just describe how you coordinate the philanthropic and the other funding sources to actually fund this initiative?
So, you know, currently, the Connecticut Project is working with Melville on the pilot program, and, you know, particularly, Melville is contributing to the research portion of the program. And we're also working with national partners because this is going to be piloted across various areas across the country. Also, you know, philanthropy is contributing to these pilots. And, you know, it's a great use of private funds. And, you know, the state supporting this initiative and expanding this initiative would be really helpful. But, you know, we've been working with various philanthropic partners across the country to pilot this program.
Thank you, and I'm look forward to you reporting on how this is working in the great city of Norwalk. But it's going to take initiatives and many aspects to actually address housing in the state, and I'm glad to hear about one more initiative. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your testimony.
Any other questions? I know Representative Roberts and Representative Butler have been teaming up today. I do have a question. I wanted to know about how the program would impact housing mobility.
Thank you so much for the question. So we believe in promoting economic freedom and by empowering families to choose housing that best suits their needs without the challenges, you know, in traditional vouchers, which, you know, sometimes create barriers to housing access. Landlords don't always accept the vouchers, and so giving families that freedom to choose housing without those barriers is really important. And so it is our assumption that this will increase housing mobility. And what's really great about this pilot program is, you know, you know, we're investing in the research to test those assumptions. And so, you know, two, three years, I'll be back here and sharing what those outcomes are.
Thank you for that answer, and thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Next is Dondre Roberts. I don't see him online. I don't see him in the room. John Souza, floor is yours, sir.
Ah, greetings, Co-Chair Felipe and Co-Chair Marks and all the esteemed members of the Housing Committee. My name's John Souza. I volunteer as President of the Connecticut Coalition of Property Owners, and I'm a full-time landlord. The association has members all over the state, from Enfield all the way down to Stanford. And for over 20 years, C C O P O has been a constructive voice for responsible landlords on such issues as nuisance abatement, bedbugs, domestic violence, and many others. We're here to represent the small, responsible, and mid-sized landlords that are around the state. Most of our members have other jobs, and we also know our tenants by their first names and value the relationship that benefits both of us. I'm here to talk about three bills today. First, two that I support. H B 7114, that's the Act to Establish a Tax Credit for the Construction of Residential Units Above Retail Property. I think that's a common sense way to encourage more housing in Connecticut. This C C O believes that such carrots are a great way that everyone can work together to solve the housing shortage without building more property. There's just no way to solve this issue. The second one related is S B 1263. That would give tax credits also for the conversion of commercial properties. This bill may actually play a key role encouraging the conversion of former office space into living space. With recent trends, I don't know about what cities you're in, but in Hartford, there's a lot of empty office space. I think the world has changed a lot where people are working from home. That's changing that. And this would encourage developers to build housing in those units. I think that's a no-brainer for both of them. The third one I'd like to speak about briefly is to oppose at least Section 1, an act permitting a tenant to file a complaint with a fair rent commission within 30 days of signing a new lease. I find this to be a very large government overreach. You know, already tenants are required in Connecticut, just a regular tenant without any subsidies or anything. Is it required to get 45-day notice of any rent increases? Never mind that they're well aware that the lease is going to come to an end at a certain point. It's all in advance. I think, you know, this is intrusion into a private contract. A lease is a contract between landlord and tenant, and I don't think the government should have any more intrusion into that. I understand in some cases it could be up to 60 days' notice. For certain subsidized rents, the letters go out before the 45 days. If there's a complaint, they have plenty of time to file with the fair rent commissions. But after the lease is signed again or renewal is signed, I don't think the government should have the power to go back in and change that agreement. I will add, you know, even with the fair rent commissions, there needs to be changes. I know there were some other bills this year talking about it. You know, when somebody does that, it can delay the rent increase for three to four months because the commissions don't act very quickly. And it's been my experience that people do it just to delay the three or four months increase every year. It gets a little frustrating from my point of view. Thanks for hearing me out, and I'll take questions. Anybody has them.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Any questions from members? Representative Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I really don't have a question, just a quick comment. Thank you, Mr. Souza, for actually coming and sharing your testimony. And I just wanted to remind you, as you probably well know, that we plan on making revisions to the fair rent commissions, and there's been a lot of suggestions, so, and thank you for adding one more to our list to consider. So thank you again for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Representative Butler. Any other questions from members? I just want to echo Representative Butler in saying thank you for coming before us and sharing your thoughts, and we'll definitely take it into consideration.
Thank you again.
Next is number 22, Mike Licamell. No, no Mike. All right. Number 23, Grace Bregwin. We're moving, folks.
Good afternoon to the chairs, ranking members, and members of the Housing Committee. My name is Grace Bregwin, and I'm a Public Policy Associate at the Connecticut Business Industry Association. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify in strong support of Senate Bill 1263 and Act Concerning Tax Credits for the Conversion of Commercial Properties. This bill provides tax credits to commercial building owners as an incentive to convert to residential use. This results in both a reduction in building costs and an increase in much-needed housing inventory. The rise of hybrid remote work environments has given way to increase vacancy rates in commercial spaces, not only across the country, but in Connecticut as well. According to Cushman and Wakefield's Quarter 4 Market Beat reports, the end of 2024 saw Hartford Central Business District's commercial vacancy rate at 32%, Stamford's at 30%, and the South Central Region of Fairfield County at 41%. S B 1263 would help alleviate costs of conversions and revitalize urban markets to repurpose those spaces into livable units. I would also like to add a personal touch to my testimony today. I moved to Hartford in 2022 for work and have lived in an adaptive reuse project in the Frog Hollow neighborhood ever since. Because of my location, I have easy access to all the amenities the city has to offer. I am able to walk to Pratt Street, the Excel Center, and C B I A's offices on a nice day. I also don't have to fight for a spot in the L V parking garage during session. My story is just a microcosm of the opportunities that could be afforded to young professionals, couples, and families should this legislation be passed. I would also like to respectfully suggest that these tax credits should be expanded to owners of industrial buildings in addition to commercial buildings. C B I A recognizes the need for all kinds of housing in order to support and grow our workforce. Thank you again for your attention to this issue, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Grace, for your testimony. Any questions from members? Representative Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Grace. I appreciate that. It was funny. A few minutes ago, we were just talking about Bridgeport, the chairman and I, about some of the industrial properties too being potentially included into this, in this bill. And I asked him simply, is there a reason why not? And I'll ask you the question as someone who's a policy analyst. Is there a reason that potentially could be why we wouldn't want to include industrial properties as part of this bill that's currently laid out for commercial properties?
Yeah, absolutely. So I don't have an answer off the top of my head for you. I can get back to you on that. But I think a lot of the concerns are in regards to environmental standards, just because a lot of these old industrial buildings, and I can speak for my own apartment building, for example, they have to go through a series of, you know, they have to clear out all the, you know, items and things that were in there previously before they are converted to residential use.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I think it's something we should definitely consider as we're... This all comes out of the Majority Leader's Roundtable as some of the things that came forward. And we should be looking at all different properties as the world's changing, right? As you mentioned, the things are changing here, and the fact that we can look at those and potentially use them as housing opportunities, they're there. Instead of, as, you know, Representative Luxembourg earlier said, it could be 300,000 to 500,000 potentially to build some units. These are units that are there, and we just have to restructure them and rezone them to make it work within that landscape.
Absolutely. And I do want to put it on the record that under this bill, the definition of commercial space is just hotels, retail space, or office space. So definitely some food for thought. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative Scott. Any other questions? Seeing none. Grace, thank you for your time and thank you for coming before us. Going to go back for a second to Mr. Dondre Roberts online.
Hey, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Co-chairs, Representative Felipe, Senator Marks, ranking members Scott, and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Dondre Roberts, and I'm a member of C T A, an organization representing over 70,000 apartment communities in the state of Connecticut. And I'm testifying on S B 1340, an act permitting a tenant to file a complaint with a fair rent commission within 30 days of signing a new lease. The purpose of the lease agreements is to create clear expectations between landlord and tenant regarding rent and terms. Allowing residents to challenge rent through fair rent commissions within 30 days signing a lease undermines the stability of already binding agreements. We think that the bill would create uncertainty for housing providers as rental rates could be subject to retroactive disputes. Additionally, fair rent commissions already serve as a great avenue for tenants experiencing excessive rent increases. I've seen so myself as a member of the New Haven Fair Rent Commission. Additionally, residents are free to negotiate lease terms before signing, and we feel that expanding this, it's kind of already done because those rules already exist. So we want to say that C T A supports fair and balanced rental policies that protect residents while ensuring a stable, predictable environment for housing providers, and we believe S B 1340 would upend that. Thank you for listening to my testimony. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any questions from members? Seeing none, we appreciate your time, and thank you for joining us.
Yep, thanks for circling back.
Next is Mallory Sanchez.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Senator Marks, Representative Felipe, Representative Scott, Senator Sampson, and distinguished members of the Housing Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Mallory Sanchez, and I'm a staff attorney at the Center for Children's Advocacy, a statewide nonprofit legal organization. We provide holistic legal representation to low-income children and youth across Connecticut through individual representation and systemic advocacy. I'm a staff attorney in our LGBTQ youth advocacy project, and I'm here to talk about H B 7112 and in particular, Section 6, which would provide critical data on LGBTQ young adults who are exiting services from the Department of Housing, children and families, and Demus Young Adult Services. Recent national research shows that 28% of LGBTQ youth have experienced homelessness or housing instability. These youth also face higher rates of mental health challenges, victimization, involvement in the child welfare system, and food insecurity. For instance, the Trevor Project, which is a national LGBTQ nonprofit, found that 58% of youth who reported past housing instability and 62% of youth who are currently homeless reported having seriously considered suicide in the last year, compared to 35% of youth who had not experienced housing instability. Transgender young people are particularly vulnerable, with 23% of trans young adults between the ages of 18 and 25 having experienced homelessness compared to 12.5% of their same-age peers. LGBTQ young people also face specific challenges when accessing social services and are likely underrepresented in current data on homelessness as they move frequently between streets, shelters, cars, and staying with friends. Additionally, recent federal policy changes around data collection in the equal access rule will make it more challenging for LGBTQ youth to access services and for agencies to collect accurate data. Notably, all of the data that I just talked about is at the federal level. Connecticut lacks crucial data at the state level, particularly data showing how outcomes for LGBTQ youth and young adults within state agency services might differ in order to address disparities in outcomes, which we know exist anecdotally. in order to address disparities in outcomes, which we know exist anecdotally, and to effectively allocate resources to address young adult homelessness, we need concrete data on the experiences of LGBTQ young adults in our state. Other states have been successfully collecting this data for over a decade. New York City, Maryland, Washington DC, and Massachusetts, for instance, all have versions of this. Washington DC passed a comprehensive LGBTQ youth homelessness reform bill in 2014 that requires data collection on LGBTQ status for both their point in time count and within their shelter system, along with funding for additional beds and a requirement that their inter-agency council on homelessness develop an annual plan to address the needs of this population. Massachusetts has similar data requirements, including within DCF, first enacted in 2006. We cannot effectively address LGBTQ youth homelessness unless we understand the extent of the crisis. We need this data. Section Six of HB 7112 is an important first step in addressing housing instability and homelessness among vulnerable young adults in Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mallory. Any questions from members? I just want to say thank you for bringing the issue to our attention. I know we've been talking with some folks about it for a long time. It's important down to every facet of who people are to make sure that we have data that reflects them in different parts of our society and in housing, it's exactly the same, housing and homelessness. So I appreciate it. We're gonna go back for a second. We have Mike Licamel. I know I said that wrong, so please correct me. Floor is yours.
Sir, can you please hit the microphone button in front of you?
Good afternoon, Chairman Felipe and Chair Marks and members of the Housing Committee. My name is Michael Licameli. I'm here to speak on HB 7112 and Act Concerning Housing and Homelessness and Rental Assistance. I had the pleasure of being able to present and share some ideas with Representative Sims and Representative Luxembourg earlier about how to help Connecticut's housing challenges, and I would very much like to share them here again with you today. I'm Resident Easton. I've been working in affordable housing since nineteen ninety-one. I don't want to count how long that is. We are also actively working on a lot of affordable housing renewable energy projects, helping with the solar program that the legislature helped put together to help get solar to affordable housing properties. So we do get to see a lot of properties and projects around the state. Our, we all recognize Connecticut needs more housing. The current process for development of housing is essentially oriented towards larger projects. And that just orientation results in a number of different issues. One is it takes longer for these projects to get approved and funded and also approved at the local level on zoning. There are substantial administrative compliance burdens that come with that, which really can only be afforded by larger projects. And it results in a higher cost per unit just than what the normal market would do. And it ends up concentrating on a smaller number of larger projects, and those tend to be in urban areas where their goal has been to try and spread things out a lot more. So, and the other part of that is that smaller developers and smaller builders kind of get excluded from the process because it's just too much of a capital-intensive effort for them to make that happen. So I have a proposal for, that I'm suggesting, which is, I just would sum up as small as beautiful. And essentially, what I'm suggesting is that the state consider creating like what I would call a streamlined express program for smaller projects. But the idea would be that, you know, you take these same processes that are current place and streamline them. And it would, for example, normal projects or market rate projects, you know, have to meet all local, state, and building codes. Of course, these same properties would have to do the same thing. But like, they shouldn't necessarily have to meet the CHAFA multifamily housing design standards, which are a substantial additional level of compliance. You definitely get highest quality, industrial strength, you know, units with that, but you also get a lot of situations where the costs are like substantially higher and the time to do that takes longer. I am also suggesting that in combination with this, that there be a supplementary program to help small, like M W B developers to put together like a credit line that could help them be part of being, participating in these state programs. The issue I see a lot is, you know, the smaller builders can get a contract for, say, a million dollars, but if there's the first draw is two hundred thousand dollars and they can't, they have to put up a hundred thousand dollars upfront to get going, they just, they don't have the capital to do that. And I think something along those lines, along with some other streamlined ideas of streamlined program, I really believe would help, would help create a lot of housing faster, at a lower cost, but also
Sir, your three minutes have expired. If you could please summarize. Thank you.
Just wrapping up that this would also be an opportunity, I think a lot of the suburban and towns that are showing some resistance to do affordable housing might be a lot more amenable if they were doing projects that were two units, four units, six units, eight units, as opposed to forty, fifty, or sixty at a time. And so I think overall, this could be a beneficial additional track to the current track for the larger projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from members? Representative Butler?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your testimony, and especially about your streamlined approach. I very much also believe that we need to do more in terms of streamlining all the process and all of what is, it just complicates the building process. And actually, we have so many things in place that actually, you know, and make it more difficult for people to build, whether it be timeline or access, or there's just a number of things that we need to do better. And so I wholeheartedly agree with your comments, and we should actually box in your comments and just make a bill out of it and pass it, but I just want to let you know, I really think that this is something I've been thinking about for a while as well, and even if we make it more conducive and to have smaller builders actually, actually build in a more efficient way quicker, it has a lot of promise, and I think we should facilitate that to see what kind of results we get. So, thank you for coming and kind of reassuring my mind that this would be a worthy path to follow. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Butler. Any other questions? Seeing none, we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Next is Lauren Tagliatella.
Good afternoon, Co-chairs Representative Felipe, Senator Marks, and members of the committee. My name is Lauren Tagliatella, and I'm a member of the Connecticut Apartment Association. I'm here in support of three bills and in opposition to one. I'm in support of HB 7112. And supports toward addressing the housing crisis by addressing middle housing development with the fifty million dollar pilot program. It also improves rental assistance programs and expands access in high-demand areas. Additionally, it creates a grant program to fund sewer infrastructure for multifamily projects. And as you know, lack of infrastructure is a primary reason why developers can't make projects feasible. This bill also prohibits municipalities from imposing minimum lot sizes greater than one acre, making land more accessible and more affordable for development. Just want to say that Connecticut Apartment Association appreciates this committee's work and collaborations on this bill. The second one we support is HB 7114. This bill encourages smart growth by increasing housing density without expanding urban footprints. It strengthens local economies by adding residential units and commercial corridors and increases foot traffic for small businesses. Third bill that we support is SB 1263. CTAA strongly supports this bill as it provides essential tax incentives for housing development and unlocks new housing supply by converting vacant office buildings and hotels. It encourages adaptive reuse and provides a ten percent tax credit on conversion costs, making projects much more feasible for developers. Lastly, I'm here in opposition to SB 1340. It undermines the integrity of a lease agreement, a binding contract, by allowing tenants to challenge rent increases after signing the agreement. This will create uncertainty for landlords who rely on lease agreements to set financial expectations. The bill assumes tenants are unaware of rent increases and renewal notices, but they have power to decline, negotiate, or seek alternative housing, and have forty-five days to do so. With my business, we tend to do sixty to ninety days just because we like to know ahead of time. However, I know the law is forty-five days. Please oppose this bill, but thank you for your time on the three aforementioned bills. I really think we can get a lot of, a lot of good work done together. Thank you.
Alright, you froze there. Are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from members? Seeing none, Lauren, thank you for your time, and I know you've been with us a few times this session. We appreciate it. Next is Daryl Fennel. Welcome back, sir.
Let me get right to the points. I'm here to oppose 1340. I agree with everything that Mr. Podolsky said, but I want to just look at the legal, the very legal statutory construction part of this bill. The Fair Rent Commission Act was created in nineteen sixty-nine. It's been in effect in this state for over half of a century. For landlords to come in here and say that it's an overreaching by the legislature at this time is preposterous. Leases are not a freely negotiable contract like under the Uniform Commutant Code. They're estates in land. The government has always been involved in regulating all aspects of a lease. This goes back to the Middle Ages. That's why they're called landlords, because they used to be actual lords. Let's look at the actual language of the statute. And because statutory construction is, requires you to actually look at the statute, and it's quite boring, I'm going to put in my testimony, when I put it tonight, my written testimony, the actual statutes themselves, so you can see that I'm saying, what I'm saying is actually true. There is nothing in the statute that depends on signing a lease. Written leases aren't even mentioned in this statute. This goes back half a century. All landlords who invest must have known the legal context of what they're investing in to come here and say, "We didn't know, we were going to negotiate," is preposterous. But what does the statute fix on? Two things. It says that, and we're talking about the rent part of it, not the investigation and the code violation, just the rent dispute part of it. It focuses on two things. Rental charges and proposed increase in rental charges. Now, in the statute, those terms come about in three different sections. In two of them, they come about as being in opposition to each other, disjunctively, rental charges or proposed rent increases. So, in the power of the rent commission, it says it has the power to look at complaints in those two categories, one or the other. In the consideration of what is an excessive rent, it is a rental charge or a proposed rental charge. In the section on orders on rent cases, it's rental charges or proposed rent increases. Now, in a statutory construction, when you have "or," it means they're different. They're not the same thing. It's not "and." A judge will say that the two things are different. Now, if you have a proposed rent increase, that's one thing. That's something that happens in the future. So what is a rental charge? It's something that exists now. The rent commissions for half a century have been allowed to reduce rent that exists now. And this bill says only up to, you can only attack it thirty days after you sign it, reduces what has been for half-century the legal right of a fair rent commission. Now, this statute, this bill that's
Sir, your three minutes have expired. If you could please summarize. Thank you.
Okay, let me just finish this one, one point. If you look at the bill as it's written, it says only proposed rent increases. I mean, that is something that couldn't be done after you signed the lease. I mean, you wouldn't attack a proposed rent. It doesn't even mention the existing rent, which is part of what the Fair Rent Commission was allowed to investigate. So, so this is going to cause confusion. Let me say one more thing. Fair Rent Commissions, including Middletown, have looked at that issue, and we say we have the right to investigate rental charges even after the rent has been, the lease has been signed. I will have more in my written testimony, and I know you're all going to be really interested in reading about statutory construction, so so there it will be. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Anybody have questions? I will, I will say that I appreciate the energy in your testimony and you putting it in the, in the terms that you did, making sure that you laid it out. I think it's important for us to hear it that way. So thank you very much. Next is Sinead Drawn, and I just want to remind people who are on Zoom, please accept your invitation to panelist. If you do not, we can't hear from you and we would like to.
Okay. Honorable Co-chairs Representative Felipe and Senator Marks, Vice Chair Senator Gaston, and Representative Roberts, and the entirety of the Housing Committee, good afternoon. My name is Sinead Drawn, and I serve as the President of Elm City Communities, the Housing Authority of the City of New Haven, and our affiliates, the Glendale Group and Three Sixty Management Group. I respectfully submit this testimony in support of SB 1267 and Act Concerning Housing Authority Jurisdiction. This legislation, if passed, will enable housing authorities to develop outside our municipalities of origin, a right that is already enjoyed by other nonprofit and for-profit developers in our state. In practice, this will allow us to leverage federal funds for Connecticut cities and towns in desperate need of housing. In this way, SB 1267 represents a sensible, no-cost solution at a time when Connecticut's housing crisis continues to deepen. My support for the bill is grounded in my knowledge of what developers like Elm City Communities bring to the table, as well as our ability to create high-quality housing of choice. At Elm City Communities, we have spent the past twenty years turning outdated public housing into beautiful mixed-income homes where any family, regardless of income, would choose to live. In addition to housing low-wage families, our developments include units that are priced appropriately for working professionals across a full spectrum of incomes, including nurses, trade workers, teachers, and scientists. We also built housing at every scale from two-to-three-bedroom townhomes to larger multifamily developments, allowing us to tailor our developments to the needs and character of a specific neighborhood. All of this is made possible by our in-house development team who pour their care and expertise into every architectural detail of our development. Together, we create housing that is very different from the developments of fifty years. It is housing for everyone, housing of choice, and housing that can fit seamlessly into any community. One of the factors that allows us to build such high-quality housing is our unique access to federal funds. Every year, Elm City Communities draw down federal resources not accessible to other developers in our state and uses these federal funds to leverage additional private capital. This is significant at a time when demand for Connecticut homes outpaces supply by tens of thousands of units, a challenge that will require billions of dollars to fully address. SB 1267 would allow housing authorities like ECC to leverage our resources more effectively, more flexibly, and more broadly at this critical time for our state and our residents. In spite of our many strengths as developers of high-quality mixed-income housing, Elm City Communities is restricted to building exclusively in the city where we are established. It has been suggested that ECC could solicit
Your three minutes have expired. If you could please summarize.
Thank you. We have, again, highlighted that we are not seeking to change any local Thank you. We have again highlighted that we are not seeking to change any local zoning laws, requirements, BZA, anything that's required in terms of us going into other communities to develop. We ask that you consider supporting this bill, 1267. I deeply appreciate your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Drawn. Any questions from members? Representative Kevin Brown, sorry.
Sorry, I liked the full name. Thank you, Chairman Felipe. And Ms. Drawn, thank you for your testimony here this afternoon. You reference in it the idea of what housing project development looked like 50 years ago, and that's not necessarily the case today. And we often hear before this committee concerns about character of community. Could you speak a little bit more to how the housing developments that Elm City or others like you are building today aren't, shouldn't be those housing projects that we would think of 50 or 60 years ago? And what kind of works are being done now?
Yes, thank you for that question. So when we look at development, we look at creating communities, and how do you effectively do that? When we actually hire an architectural engineering team, we work with the local delegation. We work with the residents that are of the development or in that community. And we work with the municipality around what is the most appropriate character for the development, given what is surrounding the area. And so we do that through a charrette process, that is through all of our developments. And so that's where an opportunity is provided for all of communities to come together, hear what we're looking to develop, hear also suggestions, right? And because they are knowledgeable about what's happening in their community, we think the water may run this way. But in fact, and you know, when it rains severely, it may run another way. So we would have our engineers there having this comprehensive discussion so that at the end of the day, it's a development that we all can be proud of, that we all can effectively say that we contributed to.
Thank you. So in other words, some of the smaller, quieter communities that are worried about changing their character don't necessarily have to worry that just because a group like yours comes in, that next thing you know, co-op city is being built in their backyard.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you so much for that testimony. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Brown. Representative Butler.
Thank you. And actually, Representative Brown asked one of my questions. The concept that this bill was looked at several years ago, start looking at allowing development up to 30-mile radius, and then we kind of reeled it back to 20 miles. And so I guess my first question is, you know, how far out of your jurisdiction would you be willing to actually travel? I guess anything less than 20 would probably be the next step.
So we didn't put a specific mileage, right, or radius from where we are located in New Haven. Definitely, we're willing to have discussion around that. Our stance is we are like any other developer, and any other developer is not limited to where they can actually develop. One of the things that I would like to raise is that for us, we are rooted in Connecticut. We are rooted in New Haven. Whenever we make profits from our developments, we reinvest in our communities. And so it is that, through that lens, that we look to do development in other areas. We don't leave the state with our developer fee. We stay in the state of Connecticut. We look at how we can best support families. All of our developments have supportive service component to it, and that is intentional because we want to be able to provide opportunities for families to succeed economically. And so we have a number of services for all of our families in our developments.
Okay, and my last question is in terms of working with the local zoning, whatever municipality that you may have a project consideration, would you be willing to work within the framework of the local zoning?
Absolutely.
Hey, great answer. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Butler. Representative Roberts.
Thank you for testifying today. Quick question. And this might sound like an overended question, but what do you say to those smaller cities that for some people, we aren't allowed to actually go in and actually do these type of buildings? Like, what is your advice to us when it comes to that? And we're creating this legislation out here and into the entire state. Like, what do you say to us as far as like how we go upon talking to the smaller cities? Because like I told, I spoke about this on our last meeting. We understand where we have local, state, federal control, but it comes to a point where we got to understand what zoning was, and we got to understand who it was for. We got to understand, you know, why it's still today. So what do you say to us when we create this legislation of these smaller cities?
Yeah, I think definitely, right, we're rooted in the need for affordable housing. You heard testimony earlier that we at least need 90,000 units in order to support that, right? And how do we collectively do that? It cannot be done by one city. It cannot be done by one town. It is a collective effort. People living in the smaller towns, they too need affordable housing, right? And so now you have to address what your constituents' needs are. And as a result of that, we have to create these opportunities. No one developer can do it. It's going to take a multitude of developers. It's going to take a number of varying, I've heard, really great potential pilot programs. And all of those things collectively will help us create housing of choice. A family should be able to move and live where they so desire and not be precluded from an area simply because they can't afford the rent in a particular town.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming before us. It's going to get, I'm going to have to get used to seeing somebody else come represent Elm City Communities, but I'm sure we will.
Yes, and again, thank you, Representative Felipe.
There we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next is Mike Papa. Next is Sean Gill.
Good afternoon. Senator Marks, Representative Felipe, Senator Sampson, and other members of the committee. I'm Sean Gill. I'm the Policy Director at Partnership for Strong Communities. And my testimony that I was going to speak to you is on my computer, which is not working. So I'm going to be really quick. We've submitted testimony on several bills. And today, I'm here, I'd like to speak in support of HB 7112. There's, this is quite a comprehensive bill, includes a lot of very good policies that we support, including funding of, additional funding for bonding for affordable housing, for the rental assistance program. And one, there's also some innovative ideas included that are, Majority Leader's Roundtable is being tasked with and which I support because they are complex ideas and should be explored more. One is the Affordable Housing Real Estate Investment Trust. One suggested amendment we have is to broaden the membership of the Majority Leader's Roundtable on Affordable Housing to include some expertise that might, members that have some expertise that might be able to help with some of these new charges, like a member from Community Development Corporations or Community Development Finance Institution. I'll leave it there. I apologize. I don't have my further notes, but then perhaps you'll be able to get out of here sooner. So it's okay. It's all right. Thank you. Thank you. I'm happy, thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions from members? We're getting towards the end of the list, so it's getting a little sparse up here, but thank you for your time, and we know where to find you for sure.
Thank you very much. I apologize again.
Yeah, I want to apologize. I skipped Sophia DeLuca online. Sophia, the floor is yours.
Hello, thank you. No worries at all. Hello, Senator Marks, Representative Felipe, and distinguished members of the Housing Committee. My name is Sophia DeLuca. I'm a New Haven resident, and I'm a student at the Yale School of Public Health. I'm here today to testify in support of HB 7112, with strong support for the inclusion of Section 6, which will require the commissioners of Housing, Mental Health and Addiction Services, and Children and Families to collect and report data on LGBTQ+ young people engaged with their services. I am not sure how many of us in this room, or virtually, have spent more than a few cumulative hours, let alone a night, outside in the dead of winter. When we do endure the sub-freezing temperatures, it is likely brief, a walk around the block with our dogs, or the brisk journey to our cars. Most of the time, we are well-bundled with the promise of a heated home or a car awaiting us. For the hundreds and hundreds of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness in our state on any given night, these sub-freezing temperatures are an all-day, everyday relentless nightmare with no respite. The numbers of people enduring this suffering are unbelievably large. Among Connecticut public school students alone, over 5,000 young people experienced homelessness at some point during the 2023-24 school year. That is more children and teens than the total number of students in UConn's first-year class. I emphasize the sheer size of these numbers because while we can try to understand the extent of homelessness and housing insecurity in our state, we are woefully underprepared to address it if the most vulnerable people and their experiences remain invisible to us. Right now, we know from national surveys and data that LGBTQ+ young people are at a disproportionate risk for homelessness and housing insecurity. Data shows that almost one-third of the LGBTQ+ youth community have experienced homelessness or housing instability. And LGBTQ youth are twice as likely to experience homelessness compared to their non-LGBTQ+ counterparts. While we know this, we do not know what this looks like right now within our own state. And so I ask that without this knowledge, how can we best act to serve these people? We know that LGBTQ+ youth engaged with the child welfare system face higher rates of adverse outcomes, including longer placement stay, discrimination, and risks of housing insecurity. But again, without the data right now within our own state to tell us what is happening here, how can we act? In order to end these disparities, we must understand where our system fails to meet and serve these young people. Right now, Connecticut's Departments of Housing, Mental Health and Addiction Services, and Children and Families have no obligation to collect this data and report it. Section 6 will change this. It can shine a light on the experiences of unhoused LGBTQ+ young people. Without this data, we keep this vulnerable group of residents invisible. But with this data, we arm ourselves with the tools to fulfill our obligations. We honor our fellow state residents, and in doing so, we work together to end these disparities. Thank you so much, and I urge you to include and support Section 6 in HB 7112. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luca. Any questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, we appreciate your time, and thank you for waiting a little bit long over this. I apologize.
Of course. Thank you for hearing me speak.
Next is Chelsea Ross. Is Chelsea here? Okay. Alexis Harrison? Kelly Killam?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Seen you all session. Nice to see you again.
Great, great to see you. Thank you, Co-Chair Representative Felipe, Senator Marks, Ranking Members Scott and Sampson, and the esteemed members of the committee. I appreciate the opportunity to come talk again today and to be present. I'm the immediate past president of the Apartment Association. I think we've chatted before about the fact that our association represents over 70,000 apartment homes here in Connecticut, and I'm a volunteer in this position, and I currently live in Portland, Connecticut. I'm here to testify today, both in favor and opposition of some of the legislation on the table. You know, I wanted to start by just making sure that we are agreeing on the mission. And I just want to show that the mission is really to add housing to the stock here in Connecticut and that we set a pathway to achieve this success together. In reviewing the 11 proposed bills, I do worry that we're missing the mark and don't see many of them as adding units to the lacking housing stock for residents of Connecticut. I'm in favor of HB 7113 as it's written today, although it's vague. It would be great to understand the depth of how this bill will encourage municipalities to develop the light-touch density housing that it notes that it's in favor of. Additionally, I'm in favor of SB number 1263, as briefly outlined again, to provide certain tax credits, the conversion of commercial buildings into residential developments. That's something that we've suggested as an association, that we continue to try to utilize both land and buildings that exist and are available today to continue to grow the stock. But again, hopeful to understand and learn from you what the initiatives looks like that you're referencing. And then I'm here to strongly oppose SB number 1340, an act permitting a tenant to file a complaint with a fair rent commission within 30 days of signing a new lease. A lease is a negotiated contract between two parties that often is committed to 30 or 60 days in advance even of commencing. And a landlord shouldn't be able to change the rental rate 30 days into the lease. And I don't understand or believe that it would be, you know, the same for the tenant, where they could change their mind, you know, 30 days into a lease contract. This proposed bill won't add apartments to the massive shortfall that we have here in Connecticut, and I don't believe that it would be beneficial to residents or landlords in building the relationship and the housing that's needed here today in Connecticut. So I appreciate your time to share my opinion on this, and again, I'm hopeful that we are able to continue to discuss other options that are available to add stock.
Thank you, Ms. Killam. Any questions from committee members? Seeing none, we appreciate your time. Thank you for joining us this session. Next is Jan Schaefer.
Good afternoon, committee members and others in attendance. And I am here to testify mostly opposing bill HB 7112. And I, like the speaker before me, agree that we do need housing, more housing, affordable housing in the state of Connecticut. But I think basically, a lot of these bills really try to put one-size-fits-all, and unfortunately, that just does not work. We're 169 towns, and our towns are all, as we all know, very, very different. But the bill 7112, while I think it does have some interesting parts to it that are workable, but I think when I see some of the mandates in this bill requiring towns to develop sewer systems for larger buildings, and when I think about what that might cost a town and the, just the implications of trying to do that, to have it mandated on a town, I think is just really unworkable and not realistic. The other part of this bill that I think is really not workable is mandating a one-acre lot size. Perhaps if this had been done way back when, many hundred, more than 100 years ago, that would be feasible. But today, I think it's really unfeasible when I look around and see lot sizes all over Connecticut that are much larger than one acre. And when I think about some of the lots where they have to have septic systems and well water, the thing of trying to break up lots into smaller units, and some of the things like ledge rock and other very prohibitive obstacles to doing that just doesn't work. And this is just totally an aside. I live in Fairfield County this weekend. I happen to have spent quite a large portion of my time in the northern part of the state. I was in New London and Manchester, to be exact. And I'm kind of looking around Manchester, and lovely town. But I'm thinking, I think that when I Googled it, it has about, a population of about 60,000. But I started thinking to myself, and I've said this before, why we are not looking at some of these towns that have been around Hartford, around New Haven, and even around Bridgeport, parts of Fairfield County, that really could use economic development? And why we aren't looking at creating good economic development in these towns and building the appropriate workforce housing for these developments where we have a lot more space than some of the very congested smaller towns that already really are very congested and the traffic is bad, et cetera.
Have expired. If you can please summarize. Thank you.
Thank you. And that basically is what I have to say. So thank you for your time. Thank you. And that that basically is what I have to say. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from members? Seeing none, we appreciate your time. Next, we have Eli Saban.
Good afternoon. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Senator Marks, Representative Felipe, Senator Sampson, Representative Scott, and esteemed members of the Housing Committee. My name is Eli Saban, and I am testifying today in support of HB 7112 and SB 1267 on behalf of Connecticut Voices for Children, a research-based advocacy organization working to ensure that one day Connecticut will be a thriving and equitable state where all children achieve their full potential. First, Connecticut Voices for Children supports HB 7112, an act concerning housing and homelessness and the rental assistance program, because we believe the studies and policy changes it includes will build toward critical reform that makes our state more affordable. In particular, section eight of the bill takes significant strides toward addressing housing instability and promoting more equitable communities by allowing rental assistance calculations to be based on zip code. We support this change because rent levels and income can differ drastically within a municipality. So this adjustment will enable voucher recipients to access a wider range of housing options, fostering more integrated and diverse communities. This targeted shift, coupled with housing choice voucher homeownership program funding, will empower individuals to pursue housing options that will support their long-term economic mobility. Additionally, section 11 of the bill would make a substantial $500 million investment in affordable housing projects through the Community Investment 2030 Board over the next five years, demonstrating a major commitment to expanding housing availability. As legislators and advocates have noted, year after year, Connecticut is facing a housing crisis, and residents across the state are suffering from increased homelessness and housing instability. Addressing housing insecurity in Connecticut requires an intentional, multi-pronged approach that includes short, middle, medium, and long-term solutions to increase housing security. We at Connecticut Voices believe that HB 7112 does exactly that, and we applaud the committee for putting forward this comprehensive bill that will tangibly address many critical components of the housing crisis. CT Voices also supports SB 1267, an act concerning housing authority jurisdiction, because enabling public housing authorities to build affordable housing and administer housing vouchers in areas with more resources will increase affordability, disrupt patterns of segregation, and expand housing choice and opportunity. Housing authorities have become major builders of quality, deeply affordable housing, particularly in mixed-income developments, which is desperately needed, given that conservatively, our state is short tens of thousands of housing units. Expanding the jurisdiction of housing authorities can also help increase the number of thriving, diverse communities in our state by building affordable housing in more towns. For these reasons, we support SB 1267. Thank you so much for your time and for your work on these important bills.
Thank you, Eli, and thank you for your work in the city of New Haven. Any questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, we appreciate your time. Last but not least, I think I think he intentionally wanted to close us out. We have Robert Chesson. Please just turn on your microphone. There you go.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon. It's great to be here before sundown. So I appreciate the opportunity to be before you again, Robert Chesson with the Connecticut Apartment Association. I'm here in opposition to Senate Bill 1340. As we've heard from many people throughout the weeks, we have a housing crisis in Connecticut. I would suggest, however, that the persistent theme of an avalanche of proposed legislation during this session that either intent is intended to or will result in more costly and more difficult operations for landlords in Connecticut is is not going to help that problem. When faced with rising taxes, rising costs across the board, and laws that are intended to quote-unquote protect tenants, landlords find themselves facing and becoming a de facto subsidy program as more and more the burden of providing that affordable housing gets siphoned off of them. Senate Bill 1340 is yet another rock in that avalanche under which the landlords find themselves. General operations typically call for 60 to 90 days advanced notice from a landlord of their intentions to renew a lease. That includes the terms under which that lease would be renewed. That same timeframe is the timeframe in which a landlord, or excuse me, a tenant has to indicate their indication that they intend to vacate the premises. It is unreasonable to expect the landlords to operate their businesses when the contracts that they sign, having not been breached, are now going to be called into question and challenged unilaterally by one of the parties that already agreed to that contract. Tenants know when their lease is expiring, and they're given ample notice of the terms that the landlord is seeking for the renewal. The state already imposes itself on this lease through the fair rent commissions and this private-party contract negotiation. Expanding that imposition is simply a bad policy. Senate Bill 1340 is another rock under which current landlords are being buried, and it will make other landlords question whether or not they want to actually invest their dollars in this state. I'm available to answer any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Attorney Chesson. Any questions for members? Senator Sampson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Robert, nice to see you again. Thank you for being with us today. Appreciated your testimony, although I will tell you, I'm always at a disadvantage when I'm questioning someone I tend to agree with. I'm just built differently. I need to question people that I'm debating. Debating folks with. They're reminding me I don't have to ask you any questions, but.
Feel free to ask as many as you like. The sun doesn't set for a while.
Indeed. So speaking of talking to people I don't necessarily agree with, over the past several weeks or so, I've actually had a few phone conversations with some of the folks that have testified before us on the other side of these issues. And, you know, I offered myself up to them and said, look, I want to hear your story. And there was a lot of very interesting commentary. The one thing I think was the thread that seemed to permeate through all of my conversations is that most of these folks already had a mechanism in the law to take an issue with whatever it was, whether or not the landlord was failing to provide them notice prior to the end of the lease term about their rental amount or whether the lease was going to be renewed, or they failed to provide some sort of maintenance to the apartment and so forth. It seemed to me that in almost every one of these cases, the just cause eviction or this requirement for 30 days is irrelevant to them. It was larger issues or different issues that are already covered in the law. And I'm just curious if you have a reaction to that. Because when I talk to people about these types of policies, I think that they're just in favor of anything that is going to put pressure on landlords. And to your point, I see that as a potential damaging impact to the housing market at large. So if you just have a reaction to that, I appreciate it. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, so I would start with the, I think the landlord's only mechanism to have an issue with the tenant is the housing court. That's where the landlord gets to go to address concerns that they have with the the relationship as it has transpired. These are the things I've been able to identify in the law that a tenant has access to. They have access to housing code enforcement actions, which also happen to go through housing court. They can certainly use the housing court for other civil actions if they saw necessary. The fair rent commission, the banking commission, small claims court, local code and zoning departments. They have certainly have access to legal support through various legal aid organizations around the state in all of those environments, as well as the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities. And so all of those various venues are places where our office, me personally, spend an inordinate amount of time defending landlords against complaints made by tenants. And so there, all of those issues have a place for to be addressed that are already built into the law. And much of the legislation that I've seen come through this particular session, in fact, I think I've identified about 13 different bills that would either expand the authorities that already exist or impose further issues in the landlord-tenant relationship.
Senator Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a very interesting list. So you've got the landlord really having only one mechanism if they fail to come to terms with the tenant specifically, and that is to go to housing court. And yet, the tenant has housing court, the enforcement arm of housing court, as well as the typical housing court, you know, dispute, fair rent commissions, small claims, banking commission, local zoning, legal aid, and CHRO. I think those are all the items you mentioned, and I tried to write them down because that's a very interesting way to look at it. When, maybe this is directly related to this question, but very often we'll hear folks say that the reason why they need these laws is because the landlord has this distinct advantage over the tenant in a dispute. And being a small landlord myself and dealing with many, many other landlords and property owners over the years, I've never seen it that way. I've always felt like the tenant has the advantage because they're in control of the property. And that means that they actually have the keys, they are possessing it, and they can do what they want with the property. And the only way for a landlord to react is, as we just mentioned, housing court and a lengthy and expensive process. Any thoughts on the notion of whether or not the landlord or tenant has an advantage in these cases through you, Mr. Chairman?
Attorney Chesson.
Well, I would certainly say the the tenants have a much larger toolbox if there are issues. You mentioned, you know, tenants are in possession of the premises, they have the keys. I know in many instances, when inspectors come in for subsized housing, for section eight voucher housing or those sorts of things, the landlord gets cited for the problems, even though the tenant's the one who created the problem. And the tenant then controls access to the unit so that the problem can be resolved. And when the problem can't be resolved because the tenant won't give access, then the landlord gets cited yet again because they haven't resolved the problem within the necessary timeframe. It's not always the case, but it certainly doesn't doesn't suggest that the landlord has the power position in that relationship. There are laws that would allow the landlord to go get an injunction to gain access, but it seems not only is it time-consuming and expensive, but it seems like an unnecessary effort when the the purpose of the landlord coming is to solve a problem within the unit. And at the end of the day, it's at the landlord's cost. And so there's no way to to recover that absent some sort of potential lawsuit where there's a claim that the tenant caused the problem and they are under the least responsible for it. But of course, that also costs time and effort and money. So I don't I don't perceive the, and I only represent landlords. So I don't perceive the disparity in that power relationship that is continuously described because of all of these agencies and all of the time that a tenant can impose their will upon the landlord. If they don't pay the rent, the landlord's got to go to court. Well, then they can spend months of not paying while the court process rolls out. All the while, the landlord has to eat that rent. And the likelihood of chasing that after the fact and collecting it after the fact is very, very low. And so I I had an example of a case. I was in court this morning. I had a tenant who had $42,000 in rent. Landlord's never going to see that money at the end of the day. And so who's got the power in that relationship?
Senator Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I don't disagree with you, and I've actually struggled sitting through some of these meetings and listening to the perspectives that have been offered because I just, I think that they're not treating the situation fairly and looking at all sides. I always attempt, you know, sitting in this chair to hear everyone out and try and make sure that I'm not putting any personal bias into the equation. I feel like our number one responsibility as lawmakers is to defend the rights of our constituents. Property rights may be one of the more important things that we do in the Housing Committee. And it's just frustration to me that that does not seem to be the focus of the of the leadership of this committee, even though I'm very friendly and I like my colleagues, that they're willing to sacrifice property rights in the quest to do something to uneven the scales to benefit tenants. And I guess there's two two main topics that I think are at play in this bill and some of the other ones that we've reviewed. Property rights certainly, but also contract, private contracts, respecting private contracts. Are you familiar with other types of legal contracts where the state puts so much effort into interjecting themselves into what can be contained in the contract? Just out of curiosity, I don't know what other types of law you practice. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Chesson.
So considering this is all I do, I am not familiar specifically with the laws that are in play around a variety of other contracts, although in preparation for coming today, one of the questions that I kept that kept rolling around in my mind was, how would a grocery store stay in business and continue to offer the services of their business in a community when the state said you have to sell all of your your products at a loss? And the misconception about what a landlord makes on a property is something that can't be overstated. Landlord makes roughly seven cents on the dollar of their revenue as their profit. And I would posit that anybody who is investing their money and getting 7% is relatively happy. But when it gets knocked down to six or five or four, they start to consider whether or not that's an investment they want to continue to to maintain. And that's that's the harsh reality, and the grocery store would face the same problem. They work on very, very small margins, and those margins, one eviction case gets rid of that margin. One eviction case gets rid of any profit they would see from that particular unit. And the one I had this morning will address, I don't know, 4,200 units worth of lost profit.
Senator Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that answer. Again, it also is another situation where, as I, one other thing that we hear all the time is that the landlord, as we just discussed, has this tremendous advantage supposedly. And as a result, the terms of the contract are always an imposition to the tenant. And as I spoke to this young lady yesterday, who was one of the people that testified here, we had a very nice conversation, and I saw her perspective, and I tried to be very fair with her. But I kept asking her questions. I'm like, you know, what other things in life that you buy or purchase where you actually have an input in what the relationship is? Where you can actually tell the landlord, well, I'd like to change this provision in the contract? And I think that many of the people that have come before us don't don't see that that's even a possibility. But in my experience, and I have a considerable experience, not as a landlord, but as a Realtor, you know, working in the industry and dealing with a lot of property owners over the years, I don't know a landlord that isn't willing to make a modification to a contract to accommodate at least a qualified tenant. I didn't know where I was going with this question, actually. I thought of several, several things along the way. But it seems to me that if this type of policy goes forward, the most qualified tenants are going to be unaffected. They're going to be in a great place. They're going to still be able to find a rent. They're still going to be able to, you know, take care of business and so forth. But people that have even slight blemishes on their record, late payments, or maybe not a super desirable credit score or rental history, they're going to have a much tougher time. Do you agree with me that, you know, passing these laws is going to just increase the level of scrutiny that the housing provider is going to put on applicants? Through you.
Attorney Chesson.
Well, certainly as the the overall risk of being a landlord goes up, the scrutiny around who a landlord is willing to rent to would seem to follow. I will tell you that there are a number of programs, a number of policies, a number of ideas in the world of landlording that help the the population that you're referencing. referencing, the, the people with the, um, questionable debt on their credit report or something along those lines. In fact, I've, um, just recently learned of a, a, a bond program that there are bond companies where a tenant can purchase an insurance policy for their fulfillment of the lease. And if they fail on that, um, the landlord can make a claim and perhaps recover some of that money. Um, and it was only because of the bond program that that particular tenant, who was a, a rejection to begin with, was able to then get an apartment. Now it turns out, they're going to have to make a claim on the, the insurance policy because the tenant was not successful, but at least gave them an opportunity to, to overcome that hurdle that they might've, might've otherwise face, faced. And I know there are, um, I know we've got, uh, surety programs, and I think Connecticut even has a program where they provide, uh, security deposit protection that is intended just for that situation.
Senator Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't want to, uh, stray from the, uh, agenda that we have today and the bill that you testified on too much, but that is the reason why, uh, I find laughable, uh, even as a, a, you know, a, a small landlord with just a couple of single-family houses that are, uh, you know, in the city and certainly not, you know, valuable, you know, uh, expensive properties. Um, and I just know what ca- things cost. I mean, you, you know, you want to replace a refrigerator, that's some, a month's rent in a lot of cases or, or something like that. I mean, it's, um, it, it wouldn't be hard to, to create more damage than one month's, uh, security deposit. And, um, there goes the protection that the landlord has. And I think there's something lost on, uh, a lot of folks on this committee, which is that that money is, belongs to the tenant, and it, uh, it is held by the, um, landlord in escrow, of course, uh, but they've got to pay interest on it, and, uh, that money actually belongs to the tenant to protect them against any, any damages going forward. So just to, to forgive that slight, uh, departure from the, the bill that is in front of us, I, I do have a, a question that is related to maybe a more global question, which is, are you aware of landlords that, uh, purposely not, uh, renting out their property? They're keeping it vacant, um, because of the, uh, current circumstances? I read these articles all the time about, uh, New York City, uh, in fact, where you have a lot of rent-controlled apartments and they're vacant. And the reason why they're vacant is because the landlords are making a, uh, a choice to suggest that, um, they're better off just maintaining the unit at, as an empty unit, uh, as a hedge, uh, that they can write off, uh, expenses and so forth, um, and maintain it as an asset, uh, but it's better than renting it and taking the risk exposure associated with that. I'm just curious if you've run into that at all. Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Chesson.
I have, actually have a client who, um, has a Connecticut portfolio, but also has a extensive portfolio throughout New York. And, uh, they've shared with me that they have a number of units that, uh, they either won't improve because the, they're not allowed to charge the rents that would be commensurate with the, the update of the unit, or they leave them empty because the, um, the cost of, of going through any sort of, of renovations would outweigh the opportunity that they would have to recoup that through renting the unit. So yes, for sure.
Senator Sampson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for all tho- those comments. I mean, I, I'll just ask you a, a kind of a throwaway question that's obvious from your answer, which is, do you foresee that that could become a more likely outcome for, uh, property in Connecticut, given the, um, policy that is coming from this committee that is putting more and more, uh, barriers, uh, in front of housing providers? And I want to just thank you for your testimony and your, uh, willingness to come before the committee. Thank you.
Certainly, it's a pleasure being here, and I would say, I, I don't know of any of those decisions yet being made. I can tell you, I get asked that question, uh, by clients regularly with respect to their intent to remodel a property, bring it back online as a, you know, a renovated, uh, community. Hey, how do I, how do I hedge my bet here? And, um, some of the laws that, uh, are being proposed during this session would, um, certainly lead them to conclude that that would be the worst decision they could make.
Thank you, Senator. Any other questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you for your time, Attorney Chesson. And I think that is the end of our public hearing. We'll see you on Thursday, everybody.
Thank you.